Trick or treat.
So, we're good. Anyways, so call in to order our regular council meeting of Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Just to notify the public that the city council may vote to go into executive session to receive legal advice and discussion on any of the agendized items. Ms. Salzberg, roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Councilmember Aslyn?
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Shimonie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It would be my pleasure. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, our mission statement.
To protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Down to agenda item number four, our public participation. And we do have a few members of the public on this regard, I believe, five. Mr. Joe Shannon, please.
Hello, Mayor Deasy, councilors. I'm talking today about Observatory Mesa and Lowell Observatory, and two really important words, Observatory Purpose, that we talked, we discussed last week as well. The removal of this requirement from the bill currently being held up is an incompatible development that could permanently alter the character of the area. More intensive development would lead to the need for a road in an area that right now is a roadless area thanks to the bond that Flagstaff residents passed a couple decades ago. This is a really important thing to keep in mind. And what below, what is below this open space of 2,200 acres is Thorpe Park. There is really difficult to understand how Observatory Mesa could be developed at the scale that Lowell is discussing and not impact one of our favorite parks in the city. If this proposed legislation passes, the citizens of the, of Flagstaff would not have any say in what goes on. That's an important aspect also as well. We surrender our rights to have any say on Section 17. We urge...
Can I ask you to speak a little bit closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to repeat myself? No, just kidding. So if this proposed legislation does pass, we hope it doesn't, and we think one way at least to slow it down is for the council's resolution to be against this change in these two words, because we feel the residents will not, our thoughts and processes will not be made public, and it will not be a transparent process, which we have already seen with Lowell. If it was for Allison Gitlin, paying attention to what's going on, most of us would have never seen any of the supposed transparent work that's been done by Lowell today. So, and this lack of transparency really brings to home why they want to change these two words, Observatory Purpose. If they weren't going to go for a full-out 635 acres or 615 acres development, then why are they changing these two words, Observatory Purpose? So I hope you consider these points, and I'm sure we'll see more next week when it comes up on the agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And just so everyone, the public knows, that during general public participation, city council members are not able to respond or ask questions or answer because it's not agendized. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that procedurally. Um, we have Nicole Whitton.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Nicole Whitten, and I'm a fellow with the Arizona Students Association and a freshman studying political science at NAU. I'd like to share a little bit about my story today and my journey to college. My passion for politics is why I decided to go to college and why I'm standing in front of you today. My journey to college was not easy. My jour, junior year of high school, I was placed into foster care. I was ripped from my world of normalcy. My goals changed. All of a sudden, I'd lost my drive to go to college. I started failing my AP classes. I could feel myself giving up, all because of the environment I was in. None of the girls in my group home wanted to go to college. The biggest reason? The price. We had no parents to fund our higher education. We had little support from guidance counselors or teachers on how to find resources to pay for tuition. I was one of the lucky ones. I received help and guidance from my teachers, and I was able to be reunited with my mom before my senior year started. I managed to get back on trap, track, earn scholarships, and scramble the money I had to pay for my freshman year here at NAU. But the girls I left behind, the ones who weren't so lucky, this is why I urge you to endorse the As Nearly Free as Possible Act. It is clear that the state of Arizona is not invested in our education, as evidenced by the dramatic rise in tuition costs over the last decade due to lack of investment. The name of our initiative comes from a line in the state constitution that university tuition must be as nearly free as possible. The goal of our initiative is to get the state of Arizona to pay at least 50% of the actual cost of tuition for undergrad resident students attending one of the three public Arizona universities, or a 2% surcharge will be added to Arizona's corporate tax rate. Additionally, it locks in tuition rates for said students for four consecutive years. Finally, any increase in tuition for said students is limited to increases in the prior year's cost of living increase. I support this initiative because I want more kids in foster care to go to college. I want them to not worry about money and instead focus on pursuing their passions through higher education. We can break the cycle of poverty among kids in foster care and lower-income families as a whole. This is where it starts. City councilors and mayor, there's an endorsement link in your email. To the larger public listening, you can help us cap tuition rates and invest higher education online at www.isnearlyfree.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Whitten. Hillary Givoli?
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Hillary Givoli, and I have lived in the downtown area close to Lowell Observatory for 17 years. I understand that Lowell Observatory is asking for a resolution to support having complete access to 640 acres of land that was deeded to the Organization for Observatory Purposes. Congress did not deed this land for a business or development venture. I ask you to support our community in upholding the original intent of the deed. Please do not remove any existing protections from the land. Observatory purposes do not include scientific research labs or facilities that are not directly for astronomy research, including TGEN labs, hotel and visitor accommodations, a performance arts venue, science-related or other commercial developments, residential property development, land sale, property leases, or a resort hotel. The removal of this designation could lead to massive incompatible development that could permanently alter the character of Flagstaff. I am not opposed to Lowell, science, or development, but this is the wrong place for such a potentially large campus. Lowell properties combined are approximately 90% the size of NAU. Imagine the traffic this would generate across the west side of town, not to mention the destruction of a cherished forest in the heart of our city. If you decide to adopt a resolution supporting less protection for Section 17, there needs to be a transparent public process to determine whether the community supports this change. Our community deserves to know exactly what Lowell's purpose is in seeking to remove the existing restriction. Like all of Flagstaff, the area surrounding the observatory is indigenous land. Over the last few years, the city has taken some positive steps toward developing a better relationship with the indigenous community here. To honor these relationships and continue building trust, I urge you to defer to indigenous perspectives rather than outside business interests, the sole trustee, or the leadership of Lowell. Please take action to protect this unique open space in the middle of town and all the plants and wildlife who live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Givoli. Next is Rose Tohe.
Can you still hear me? No? Yes, maybe. There.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Greetings, Mayor and Councilmembers. And thank you for your time. This afternoon, I want to just have you save, do a save date on November 23rd at 11:00 a.m. I am also serving in the city as the Indigenous Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, I'm sorry. And on that date, we're going to be having, as part of Native American Heritage Month, we'll be having a guest speaker. His name is Darius Smith, and he is the Director of the Denver Anti-Discrimination Office, and he's also a liaison for the Denver American Indian and Black Commission, African American Commissions. So I just want to let you know that, and he will be presenting on a, among telling his story of self-determination through his Navajo and African-American experience, and how he facilitates resolutions of civil rights discrimination complaints by utilizing indigenous form of peacemaking. Mr. Smith draws from deep cultural connections, making sense of cultural inner intersections, and how that plays out in social, economic, professional, and system areas. He shares his, he will share his common sense interview techniques on how he uses motivational interviewing when working with community and how ethical communication is the key to true dialogue. Utilizing common sense principles and encouraging these ethical settlements has helped his office successfully evolve within the city's structure. Again, I also said that he's the, he proudly supports the Denver American and American Indian and African-American Commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tohe.
Before I go to, I just want to say thank you to the Commission of Diversity Awareness for bringing forth the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation.
Thank you. We do have a public participant online, but I understand we're having some sound issues with our streaming feed. So if we want to take a short pause, or how are we doing from IT side of things? Cool. Snickers Cookies and Cream or Milk Duds? That was my favorite. There you go. All right. Anyone? Got it? Hold on, hold. Nice. Go for it. I'll, I'll steal my other, my kids' candy. I got four of them. They stashed up. I'll proceed accordingly. All right. Thank you. All right. Sounds like it might be just some individuals' issues or an issue with Teams, but the live streaming is doing okay through the website. So with that, we can continue here down to, we have three proclamations of the day.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We do have one more public comment.
Oh, that's right. My apologies. Ms. Ann Modick? My apologies if I mispronounce.
Ms. Modick, are you able to hear us?
Ms. Modick, can you hear us and unmute?
Ms. Modick, if you could unmute yourself on the upper right-hand side. Mayor, we have Mr. Jerry McLaughlin as well. Would you like me to take his comment first?
Uh, yes, please.
Mr. McLaughlin, could you please unmute yourself?
Mr. McLaughlin, can you hear us? I think the IT issue we might be having is with Teams. Please let me know if we are able to connect with. Otherwise, we'll need to proceed. Oh. There you go.
Mr. McLaughlin, you are still muted.
Be on the top right button for the mute. We're, we're trying to work it out on our end as well to see if we can unmute from here.
Mr. McLaughlin, could you please try to unmute yourself again?
Hey, maybe we got it. You got me now?
Oh, we got it. Right on.
Oh, I hit that like 20 times. When do my three minutes start?
Let's go ahead now.
Yeah, go for it.
Do you still have me?
Yep, we are, we are hearing you loud and clear.
Jerry McLaughlin, Flagstaff, 923 West Beale Road. I just wanted to take the time to voice my opinion and oppose that the hundred, the change to the 110-year-old land changed in any way. I'd also like to recommend or see council adopt a resolution opposing any change in this, in this protection and keep it, keep it in place forever. I mean, offices could be anywhere, and that's no place for dormitories, emergency access roads, amphitheaters, laboratories. All that is non-observatory purposes. And it's almost one square mile. It's a huge chunk of land. Also like to say that I think that Lowell has kind of given you guys a false sense of urgency. I don't know why this can't be done with more public outreach. I know a lot of people are just now hearing about this for the first time in the past week. There, I'd like to see council at least put the brakes on this, and you know, let, let's get some more public outreach. But I think it's a bad idea, especially with the emergency road for fire and ambulances and whatever else is going to need, and probably have to go right through Thorpe Park, which is not ideal in any way, shape, or form. So that's my, that's it. Minute and a half. I'm done.
Awesome. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Do we have Ann Modick? Let's see if we can get her back on here.
Ms. Modick, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you'd like.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yay, it worked. Okay. Well, thanks for your patience. Hello. And I've lived in Flagstaff for the last 41 years, so you could definitely call me an old local. I'm here today to present my concerns with the proposed city resolution of removing congressional protections from Section 17. Lowell Observatory and the mesa that it sits on is, is a precious commodity to those who live in Flagstaff. This is really a big decision, and I believe we need to slow down. Development of this area may add a road that will undermine also the tranquility of Thorpe Park and the mesa's set-aside natural area and the pristine Lowell Observatory area proper. I really urge that this process slows down and that we really think about this, so about the implications of this decision. I also urge a letter of opposition so that this area is preserved as it is for use and enjoyment of future generations. Thank you for your consideration and your time and consideration of this request.
Thank you, Ms. Modick. Is that the last public participant we have for this section? All right. We're down to agenda item 5A. This is the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, and I just want to thank the Diversity Awareness Commission for bringing this forward to us. And I understand we do have a, a couple of folks online for this. So, thank you. The city of Flagstaff celebrates the rich cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Native Americans, indigenous peoples, and recognizes the vital contributions native peoples have made to strengthen and diversify our community. The mayor and city council of Flagstaff have a history of supporting the advancement of diversity. Approximately 11.7% of the citizens in the city of Flagstaff are members of Native American nations, including Havasupai, Wallapai, Hopi, Navajo, and Paiute tribes, as well as other tribal members who cherish the region. Native Americans, indigenous peoples, and Flagstaff have played and continue to play an integral role in shaping, developing, and creating a vibrant city. The Flagstaff City Council established the Commission on Diversity Awareness to advise the city council on issues and methods in promoting diversity awareness within the city of Flagstaff. And the Commission on Diversity Awareness supports the designation of the month of November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month, in unison with state and national observances. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month, and encourage our community to learn about the history, heritage, and contributions of Native American peoples of this great land. All right. We do have next our Family Court Awareness Month. And do we have the individual in the room, Tina Swithen, by chance? Or she's tapping in online?
Mayor, she is available online. Give me just a moment.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that this is going out to Tina here for the Family Court Awareness Month. The mission at One Moms Battle, OMB, and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAAMC, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. Mission of the, at the FCAAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system. And the mission at the FCAAMC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on the empirical data and research that is currently available. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. This research includes the adverse childhood experience. Sounders study, the Meyer Study, for child custody outcomes in cases involving abuse allegations, and the Santa Clara Law Study confronting the challenge of high conflict personality in family court. The mission at the FCAAMC is fueled by the desire for awareness and change in the family court system while honoring the 800-plus children who have been murdered by separating or divorcing parents. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Family Court Awareness Month in Flagstaff and commend its observance to all citizens. Thank you for all your work, Tina.
Thank you very much. Can I say a few words?
Absolutely. I was gonna, yeah, off of the, off the stage for you.
Thank you. So last year was our very first year. We've made a lot of progress in our second year when we, but, but there are some really harsh realities to the work we are doing. When we first started this campaign on November 1st, 2020, there were a total of 758 children who had been murdered by separating or divorcing parents or caregivers. And in just one year, that number has increased to 810 children murdered, 52 children in a year. 111 of those cases of those children were absolutely preventable, meaning that the court had been notified of child safety concerns and failed to act on those warnings. I know from personal experience how broken our family court system is. I was naive when I entered 12 years ago, believing that child safety was prioritized, but children are divided like by property, like property, and parental rights trump a child's rights to safety. Domestic violence, we just went through Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. It's about power and control, and that doesn't vanish when the relationship ends. Many times it transfers into the family court system, and our children become the pawns. Most people are very shocked to know that most family court judges have zero training in domestic violence, and they can make decisions that affect the life, literally, of a child. So we believe the first step towards change is creating awareness, and I'm absolutely grateful to Flagstaff for joining the list of almost 200 cities, counties, and states. So we appreciate you standing with us to recognize the importance of a court system that prioritizes children.
Thank you so much, Ms. Swithen. Thank, thank you for bringing the awareness to our community. It is a plight we, we rarely are recognizing in our daily lives that we need to. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're down to agenda item 5C. This is the proclamation for Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month. The city of Flagstaff recognized the importance of Alzheimer's and related dementia care. And Alzheimer's and related dementias have a significant impact on the health and well-being of our residents. More than 150,000 Arizonans live with Alzheimer's, which is the fifth-leading cause of death in the state. Arizonans are actively engaged in educating about the disease, advocating for a proper continuum of care, and improving the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. The city of Flagstaff supports an Arizona without Alzheimer's, addressing the public health crisis. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month in this community, and encourage all our residents to learn about Alzheimer's-related dementias and patient care. We're down to agenda item number six. This is our city manager report. City manager, take us away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm reading the chat column on Teams, and I understand that there are occasional audio issues. If it breaks up, please let me know. Mayor, Council, you have in the manager's report for this meeting a few recognitions that we'd like to spend a little bit of time with. And then we have three monthly reports that are appended to my manager's report from the, it, those monthly reports include the monthly capital reports from our capital improvements team, water services monthly report, and sustainability monthly report. I would invite members from those three divisions, capital improvements, water services, and sustainability, to give you highlights of those monthly reports after I conclude my report. And finally, after employee recognitions, we'd like to call out an item for discussion. That would be the Endangered Species Act. That would be the Endangered Species Act Supportive Resolution. I might check in real fast, Mayor and Council, to see if you're okay with that ordering of things. Employee recognitions, monthly reports, and then circling back to talk about the resolution. Okay.
Sounds good to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, we have three employees that deserve to have their names mentioned here and their amazing achievements stated for all to hear. I'm going to start with Lisa Deem with our Water Services Division. Lisa Deem was presented with the Governor's Heritage Honor Preservation Award just a few days ago on October twenty-ninth. This award was earned for her work and involvement in the Eldon Pueblo Project. Lisa has served as program manager for nearly twenty years, securing funding and developing educational programs that connect learning and teaching with archaeology and culture. Fascinating project. Lisa's efforts have connected thousands of students with the rich history of the Eldon Pueblo. We are incredibly proud of Lisa and her contributions. There's been write-ups of this in the Arizona Daily Sun. And with those comments, I do understand that we have one individual who would like to speak to this, and then maybe we can hear from Lisa if she would like to share her thoughts. I believe we have online Peter Pillis, and I hope I'm getting that last name correct. Please correct me if I'm not Peter. Peter is with the Coconino National Forest. He's, he's the archaeologist, and he's, I think, on the Teams meeting now. And Peter, if you are available to chat with us, we'd love to hear from you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, I'm Peter Pillis. I'm the forest archaeologist for the Coconino National Forest. And we nominated Lisa to this prestigious award for her years of service for the Eldon Pueblo Project. Lisa started with our project in two thousand and one, and in two thousand and two, she became the project manager. Although we've been doing public archaeology at Eldon since nineteen eighty, Lisa has really taken the project up to a high new pinnacle of success. When she started, we had an average of about eight hundred and forty students participate. Figure rose to three thousand six hundred teachers and students that have gone through the Eldon Pueblo Project. The Governor's Preservation Honor Awards is a program that began in nineteen eighty-two from the Arizona Archaeological Advisory Bureau to Governor Bruce Barrett. Each year since then, they've given ten awards in a number of categories, such as people, organizations, and projects that represent outstanding achievements in preserving Arizona's prehistoric and historic resources. Eldon Pueblo itself was given that award in nineteen eighty-three. And other volunteers who have worked for the Coconino National Forest have also received the award. And in fact, eight different people have received it over the various years. So, that's the background on the Preservation Honor Awards of the state of Arizona and why Lisa received the award for the outstanding job that she's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor has a question for you real quick.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing with us all the things that Lisa has done. I think we all know her to be a superstar. You, your audio cut out a little bit when you were talking about the number of students that she has helped the Pueblo to, to attract.
Yes, that in twenty nineteen, three thousand students and their teachers participated in the Eldon Pueblo Project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for joining us. Lisa, we've been talking about you and love to give you an opportunity to share any comments if you would like.
Oh, well, I just want to say that I'm humbled by this honor. It's a unique opportunity to take passions of youth education and archaeology and be able to turn it into a community effort for public good. So, I believe in volunteerism. I've always contributed to my community, and I appreciate this honor and recognition.
And we appreciate it, and thank you so much for representing the city in the fine way that you have. It sounds like a great project and a lot of accomplishments along the way, so congratulations on this prestigious award. If I may, Mayor and Council, I'm going to continue on with the fun stuff. About two weeks ago, we attended the Flagstaff Exchange Club Annual Ceremony out at N A U, where they honor officers, law enforcement firefighting officers, for their amazing achievements. I'd like to start by recognizing Officer Brian Smithart with our Police Department. And I think he's with us tonight. We're fortunate to have his presence. Would invite him to make his way up to the podium along with Chief Musselman. And I will give a little narrative here before we turn it over to them. Officer Smithart previously attended Grand Canyon University, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in Justice Studies. He was hired in October two thousand and nineteen, having attended the Phoenix Regional Police Academy. Upon graduation, he was assigned to patrol. He is a member of the Rapid Response Team and recently took over, and this is quite notable, took over our downtown walking beat, where he excels at community policing. Pardon me. I know this firsthand because I serve on the Downtown Business Alliance Board, and I hear about Officer Smithart frequently, always in glowing terms, in terms of what he does for the community with his presence downtown. So, that's a wonderful attribute. There's no higher honor than one of your own peers recognizing you for your hard work. A fellow officer completed this nomination and stated the following in support of Officer Smithart. Quote, "I want to nominate Officer Smithart for his, this award. He has consistently demonstrated his commitment to this department. He comes to work with a positive and humble attitude each and every day." So, a wonderful accolade from his own peers. We would like to extend our congratulations to Officer Smithart for achieving this amazing award. And again, I will offer the comment that we're honored that you represent the community, the city, so positively. And with this, we can hear from Chief Musselman and hear from Officer Smithart.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. So, yes, Brian here comes to work every day with a positive and humble attitude, and his policing is consistent with the four Cs of our agency: policing correctly, consistently, constitutionally, and with compassion. And he also survived doing a walk-along with Councilmember Shimoney. So, there is no greater feat for an officer than to do that. So, Brian's a humble person. I hope you get to meet him on the street. And if you do, please recognize him for this award. We're very proud of him.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Just a couple of words. I was kind of giving some flack for not saying anything at the award ceremony, but we went first and definitely have to say a few words now. My family attended the ceremony. Definitely like to thank them. They're a great support and base for me and my wife. Also, a mini shout-out to her, the ones that attended. She, she was there. She was also recognized as Employee of the Year at the DPS Northern Regional Crime Lab, where she's a DNA forensic scientist there. So, we're kind of Power Couple of the Year in our, at our opinion. Rocking it out. We definitely push each other to do the best that we can, and we're both a little newer in our career fields, and we're definitely trying to learn and do as much as that we can. And it's awesome to be recognized for this, and definitely thank, thank everybody for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Smithart.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Do you, I think Councilmember Shimoney might want to say a couple of words.
Yeah, come on back up. No, I'm just kidding. Officer, I just want to congratulate you and say it was really a pleasure to get to know you intimately on that ride-along and, or walk-along, and really learn more about your story and your experience and your thoughts. And I just so appreciate you and your wife calling this place home, and I really hope you all make it home for a long time. And I'm glad to see you excel and be recognized tonight and in this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have another individual we'd like to honor, last but not least. City of Flagstaff Fire Department Fire Engineer Casey Gonzalez was also named at the same ceremony as the Flagstaff Fire Department Firefighter of the Year. In a second, I would invite firefighter Gonzalez, along with our fire chief, to come up to the podium. Casey has been a Flagstaff firefighter since August two thousand and fourteen. He has served in the leadership of the United Flagstaff Firefighters as president for the last three years, recently taking on the post of Secretary Treasurer. In my manager's report, there's a quote from Chief Gaylord, but I think I'm going to yield to Chief Gaylord and ask him to offer his own quotes for you lifetime here. So, Chief, come on up to the podium. And I'll note, before you guys speak, that as Casey accepted the award at the luncheon that I mentioned, sponsored by the Flagstaff Exchange Club and Findley Toyota, he directed the focus on the admiration and appreciation the firefighters have for law enforcement. So, some very, I remember hearing those comments, and they were very heartfelt. So, thank you for those comments. Chief, you want to offer some comments?
I would. Thank you very much for allowing me to, to show off Casey, and we're very proud of Casey. We're very grateful to the Exchange Club. They do a really nice job of, you know, bringing forth our, our officers and our firefighters from the various agencies in the region. And, and there's just not a lot of people lining up to do that these days. And so, when a community group comes forward and spotlights the service of our firefighters and police officers, it's a pretty special opportunity for us. Casey was selected by his peers. You know, we, we have a kind of a shared experience with Casey. I've, I've got a very strong connection to our labor leadership. The way I run fire departments is I get very close to the labor leadership, and, and we form a collaborative to try to do the best job we can to take care of our citizens as well as, as our firefighters. And so, Casey's been a joy to work with. One of the things that, the example that he brings that I shared is that, in my view, the best examples of leadership, they include a very strong presence of selflessness, and, and that is what Casey is. No one works harder in his role as a labor leader or a department member to really take care of the folks that are taking care of Mrs. Smith, as we say, our community. And so, we're very proud of that. He, the best example of that, I think, is in the early days of the pandemic. And we had way more questions than we had answers about how to take care of our responders who were in harm's way serving the community and who still are, by the way. And so, in a very collaborative way, we were able to work with, with Casey and his leadership to kind of set up a system of continually bringing forward the best information to educate our responders, bringing forward the best way to protect our responders. And believe me, that was very fluid and continues to be. So, it's been a pleasure to work with him and his leadership, and we're really grateful for his service and couldn't be, couldn't be prouder of the fact that our firefighters, the members of our organization selected Casey.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I've talked with most of you before either Zoom or in person. And just similar to what I said at the meeting, a huge thanks to Greg, to City Manager Clifton. Right person at the right time for everything that's gone on in the city the past couple of years. You never know what's going to happen when you hire somebody in after an interview, and along with Jeannie, who enjoys Florida in retirement. It's well-deserved. You never know what you're going to get, and they are, were awesome and are still awesome. And hopefully, City Manager sticks around for a while. We don't chase him off. We, we thought we wouldn't beat up Jeannie as bad as we did, but hopefully, we can keep you around a little longer. And then, as far as personally, the ones who make the big sacrifice for us, for me and our job, I mean, we, for fire, we love coming to work. You know, we get to hang out as a group. We get to chase fire around. We get to do the emergency stuff. We love coming to our job. It's our families that make the sacrifice for it. My wife, my daughters, the amount of time that we spend at work away from them fully when we're there for two days at a time, they're the ones that make the sacrifice for it. And we get the recognition in what we do, but they're the ones that make the true sacrifice. And then, what we do day in and day out and what public safety is in a, in a city. And what I said at that meeting is when you look at public safety, both sides of the house, fire has the easy side. PD has the hard side. And I, for them to be in the job they're in now, love the job probably even more than we do. And what's gone on over the past two years and what's come at them, and for them to still show up every day and do their job at the level they do, I appreciate it. And that's a big word now, getting older, appreciating things. And I appreciate everything every one of them does. We can't do our job without them. Nothing in this city functions without safety first, and that's what, with us in the fire service, from what you're taught day one, fire and EMS, it's safety first. And if we're not safe, nobody's safe. And that safety for a community comes from PD and how well they're supported within the community from all levels, from council down to the citizens. And so, for us to even be able to get a recognition, gather, have a meeting, I thank PD. I think what the City Manager has done. I think the improvements that we've come across in the last couple of years with everything. I thank all of you up there. And hopefully, with what's come, we talk a lot in the fire service about culture, what's come with the City Manager and with Council and where we've moved things these last few years from where it was prior. I hope we continue that and stick to that of improving the lives of citizens and that we don't lose focus on what we're doing. So, that's all I got to say, and appreciate it. Thank you, City Manager, and have a nice night.
Thank you so much.
Very humble.
I think it's pretty indicative of why you received such recognition that both of you came up here to talk about the great work of others and why you couldn't get these awards without the support of your families and without the group effort. And I just would like to say thank you for all that you give to your community and the selflessness that you even show in the face of recognition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I could not agree more with what you just said. Okay, we will.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Please, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, pardon my interruption. I'd like to take this opportunity for a group photo for our two officers.
Excellent idea.
And our chief and our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Member, or Councilmember Salas. Thank you for that suggestion. I would like to, at this time, invite members of our divisions who have their monthly reports to offer some very fast, high-level narrative. And maybe we can start with Water Services if somebody is available to speak to the monthly report from Water Services.
Hi. Good afternoon, City Manager Clifton, members of the City Council. This is Andy Bertelson. Please excuse me. The teams have been cutting in and out for me. So, I'm hopeful you can all hear me well enough for this bit of presentation. In our monthly report, City Manager Clifton had attached it to your monthly report. I did begin as Water Services Director on September 6th, so it has been about two months. On the first day, you will remember, we had the water line break. So, that created some excitement, but I learned very quickly how prepared our crews are from a first response level. Very impressive group led by Mark Richardson, Patrick O'Connor, and others in that response. In terms of recruitment, Aaron Young was leading a recruitment effort for Engineering Section Director. I'm happy to report that Gary Miller, who has been in Community Development slash Engineering Services, will be joining Water Services to be our Engineering Director. And for those of you that have worked with Gary, he is a professional engineer, but most importantly, he's a good person that brings a good heart to the job. And we're very excited to have Gary. And we're mostly excited to bridge that gap between our departments and divisions as Public Works, Water Services, and Engineering and Community Development, all working closely hand in hand together. So, we're very excited about that. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the City Council with the retreat to talk about our wastewater system, not always a fun topic, but when it comes to funding, some pretty significant funding opportunities going forward to maintain our core infrastructure. Also, and Emily said yay, Gary, so we're very excited for Gary to come over. Wanted to note, we continue, Stormwater continues to work on the Spruce Avenue Wash and with the Coconino County Flood Control District and the Forest Service on potential on-forest measures and then projects as it flows through the city, the system and city infrastructure. Some very large-scale projects in terms of funding. What we had talked about during the council retreat was upwards of $18 million to $30 million. So, we continue to plan for those projects. We met with Bob Kuhn at Flagstaff Unified School District last week on site. And we're continuing to meet about a potential, some potential work at the old Kellock Site. So, that's a highlight from Stormwater, water distribution, water production you'll see as well. And then, water resources and conservation. I'll be quick because, like I said, I have been cutting out. But it's really a great group to work with, a team of committed individuals to a greater cause, which is Team Flagstaff. And Water Services is in good standing going forward. And with the addition of Gary Miller and as we continue to build our team, we're very excited for our future opportunities in the division. So, thank you, City Manager Clifton, for the opportunity. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Much appreciated. Any questions for Andy before we go to the next one?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Do we have Rick Barrett or somebody with our Capitol Improvements Team to speak about the many wonderful Capitol projects that are underway? Good afternoon, Rick.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am Rick Barrett, City Engineer. And I have some updates to the update that you have in your council packet. So, I'll be brief. I think we all are aware that the old courthouse and the prosecutor's building have physically been torn down now. So, our next step there is to build a temporary parking lot, and we'll have that done over the next couple of months. In regard to America's Transportation Award, we had noted that we had won a regional award, which meant that we were one of 12 finalists nationally. We had an opportunity to win or become one of two that won a national award. But unfortunately, the Fourth Street I-40 Bridge Reconstruction Project did not make those top two finalists, unfortunately. But again, one out of top 12 projects in the nation isn't so bad. And then, lastly, protected bike lanes.
Rick, you might have cut out there. Is your mute button accidentally hit?
No.
I can hear you now. Try it again.
Okay. Where did I cut off? Protected bike lanes?
Yes, please.
Okay, good enough. So, yes, protected bike lanes. Our contractor has informed us that they will begin installation of the concrete barriers that have delineators attached to them. That work will begin next week and will commence for about four weeks, and then we will be done. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions Council may have in regard to the Capitol Report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Oh, Shimonie has a question. Why don't you-
How weird. How funny, isn't it? Rick, thank you. Good evening. And that is extremely exciting news. I appreciate the report, as always. Lot of really good information in that Capitol update. Really recommend the public check that out. Just a couple of really quick questions. I just noticed that we're doing a lot when it comes to just our roads in general. And my question to you and to our council and whatnot is, are there opportunities to evaluate road widths or lane widths to widen bicycle lane widths at times with the work that we're doing? I know that, and you can get back to me if you don't have the answer right now.
I think the answer is yes. We always look at an opportunity. I mean, whenever we put down new asphalt as part of Public Works Pavement Maintenance Projects Program, you know, we always look at what's the best place to put the striping back in. But yeah, we'd be glad to look into that some more.
That'd be great. I would so appreciate that. And, you know, recently, I spoke to Snails in Portland and just learning about the width that they make their roads and the bike lane widths. And they were recommending some pretty extreme widths for bike lanes. But whatever we can get, I would appreciate it. And I think that, yeah, I appreciate you taking that comment in stride. My other comment is in regards to the roundabout update. Another thing that we've been learning about more and more as council is the importance of slowing traffic down. And just looking at that design and recalling our conversations about it, I do have a little bit of concern with that northern leg that goes east-west and the speed that people might move at. So, I just wanted to ask you and our team to maybe look at that as you continue forward with the designs and trying to integrate the value of the public safety of slowing traffic down and sharper angles, et cetera. But I just wanted to plug that idea while I had the opportunity right now.
I'll be right there.
That's all. Thank you.
Well, and I told that with seconds, like, now I have to go over the-
That wasn't me. Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And by the way, congratulations on seeing the Fourth Street Bridge Project make the shortlist. That's amazing. So, kudos to you and the team for that. Also, please pass on our great appreciation to Christine Cameron and those who were able to see our old courthouse taken down in such short order. So, great progress being made on all fronts. Thank you.
Thank you. We're proud to do the work.
Mayor and council, we also have, from our Sustainability section, we have Nicole Antonopoulos, and she's visiting us in person to give a quick overview of the monthly report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. It's really nice to be here. Yes, I'm just going to provide a few highlights of our report. And as you can imagine, we've been incredibly busy in the Sustainability section. We have a number of items to bring forward to this evening. And we continue to work with our internal partners and a number of projects specifically related to climate action. I'm pleased to announce that our Carbon Neutrality Plan has been nominated as a finalist for the Arizona Forward Environmental Excellence Award in Climate Action. We will find out in the spring of 2022 if we are actually awarded, but really honored to at least be on the shortlist. I'm pleased to say that our Carbon Neutrality webpage has been updated and is live to reflect the Carbon Neutrality Plan, to provide resources to the community, but to also go into further detail about the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And building on that, we've also created a Building Electrification Hub to provide, again, resources to our community about building electrification and the benefits of carbon neutrality. We are in the process kind of rounding the final corner of the major regional plan amendment. And kudos to Jenny Niemann. It's been pretty much a dissertation to bring forward. But we are pleased that the 60-day review period has closed, and we are hosting this month our final two public hearings. And we'll be in front of council on December 7th for consideration of that major plan amendment. And then, we, as I mentioned, continue to work internally with our partners, not only in fleet, in Capitol, throughout community development and water services. And just huge kudos to them inviting us into the various conversations and allowing us to infuse that lens of carbon neutrality and sustainability and equity into our policies and projects. Regarding our Community Stewards Litter Prevention Program, even though we're still in the pandemic, our community is staying active. And in the month of September, we had 109 volunteers donate almost 200 hours of their time picking up a fair amount of trash and recycling. So, we're continuing to stay safe with our engagement with our volunteers, but really are thankful for all the work they're doing to help keep our community clean. As I mentioned earlier about our Electrification Hub, I did want to talk a little bit more about our energy program and that the four new Level 2 electric vehicle charging stalls at the Aquaplex are officially live. So, members of the Aquaplex can charge their electric vehicles while they're getting some exercise or doing some personal health meditation or whatever programming they may be pursuing. And just a few more updates, our food systems, where we've had tremendous success with our residential food scraps pilot. It has been a drop-off program. It was a pilot that was funded with one-time funds for this fiscal year. And we have now shifted to self-service drop-off stations now that the markets have shut down for the season. So, we're really thankful to partner with some internal partners at Recreation, Hal Jensen, and then at our community market. And then, we had hosted a tremendous amount of workshops over the summer season, and those have been wrapping up regarding garden workshops and so forth. And then, a quick update on our Pay as You Throw pilot. We had more than 200 residents in the Ponderosa Trails neighborhood sign up for the pilot. And we continue to do bin inspections to help our community members better understand recycling, recycling contamination. And we have two weeks left in that, and that will really help inform us as we move forward to bring a recommendation to the council for our Pay as You Throw transition. But it also helps inform us on our education needs, what areas we really need to focus on in terms of educating our community on reducing contamination. And with that, I will say that we have a great update for you next month as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Antonopoulos and all our Sustainability team.
I'm not seeing any questions. I will move on to the last item. And thank you for giving us so much time with the manager's report this meeting. We appreciate it. A couple of council people had asked to have brought before this council a draft resolution in support of the Endangered Species Act. And I want to offer up at the front end that this, you know, probably doesn't fit neatly within our typical protocol for bringing resolutions in front of council. And I want to ask for your forgiveness in that and please indulge us as we kind of go off-script, if you will, and do this a little bit of a different way. And that is to include a draft resolution in my manager's report. Get a read from council as to your support for this resolution. And if there is support, we will bring it back at a future meeting, likely in the form of a consent item or whatever our city clerk so advises us. So, a little bit of an unusual procedure, but a very important one. And the timing of this is the reason it's before you in the context of my report. The support resolution, and you have a draft in the packet, is the product of some recent news regarding a solitary Mexican gray wolf that has taken up residency north of Williams, north of Flagstaff in our National Forest here. And some efforts to relocate that wolf have been unsuccessful as the wolf has returned, apparently. That's the latest that I read on it. I am not an expert on this, but I did include a nice excerpt in my report to you with numerous quotes and some background narrative regarding this wolf that has come into this area. And so, with that, I know a couple of council people may have interest in speaking more to this. And I think this would be a good time for me to platform to any questions or comments you have. And the draft resolution is in the packet, and hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. And thank you to all the residents who have written in to us in support of this resolution. I'm very excited to support it, and I'm rooting for Anubis. Anubis, I think is how, Anubis. I'm rooting for him. And I think it's exciting to, at the prospect of having a Mexican gray wolf in northern Arizona. And it's been some time since one has been here. And so, I'm very much in support of this and, again, grateful to all of the citizens who have voiced their support for it as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Did you want to say a few words?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And thank you, City Manager. I appreciate you bringing this back up and using the tools at your disposal, given its timely manner, to get it back before us. Very much supportive of this. I remember approaching you about it and asking you about it. The Endangered Species Act is one of the most important tools we have in our nation to protect biodiversity. And the protection of biodiversity is just as important to a stable and healthy environment as the protection of diversity is to a stable and healthy community. So, our ability to support this resolution is important. It is wonderful to see Mexican gray wolves coming back through the area. It feels like an act of restorative justice in my mind. I know I keep comparing apples and oranges here, but I think it's important for us to be able to code-switch and think in broad terms about these efforts. And I look forward to the rewilding of northern Arizona and the southwest and the region with Anubis, I believe, is the way you pronounce that. It's Egyptian, I think, coming into the area. And I do agree with what Ms. Wren said. Looking for her quote because I might as well say it the way she said it.
Well, she is actually a public speaker after you two talked, so we could-
Yeah, she made some comment about the risk to this wolf is just as great wherever he is. He should be allowed to remain where he finds himself. And I couldn't agree more. Looking forward to hearing from our public speaker.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. With that, I'd like to invite Emily Wren to the podium.
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Emily Wren. I am a Flagstaff resident, as well as a wildlife biologist and the Executive Director of the Grand Canyon Wolf Recovery Project. Thank you for your consideration of a city resolution in support of the Endangered Species Act and for supporting the threatened and endangered species that call this area home. Our region involved with a rich diversity of wildlife, but much of that native wildlife was eradicated to near extinction through human misunderstandings and the settler colonialism attitudes of the 1800s and 1900s. One of the reasons Flagstaff is such a special place is because we are surrounded by beautiful national forests- national forests and national parklands. But people often don't realize we are only witnessing the remnants of what it once was. We are living amid the sixth mass extinction of life on Earth. There is no time to waste. We can recover the biodiversity of our region only if we recognize its importance and acknowledge the intensive recovery efforts that are necessary to restore our natural communities. Keystone species like wolves play a disproportionate role in the health of ecosystems and often provide benefits to many other species, so their conservation has numerous ripple effects. Wolves used to inhabit this region, but they have been absent from northern Arizona for the last 80 years. We are fortunate to have wolves venturing back to the forests of our area, but they are few in number and risk capture and translocation when they cross north of the arbitrary boundary of Interstate 40. Climate change is shifting food and water resources, not just for humans, but also for wildlife. Animals are forced to adapt and shift their ranges to survive. We need to make sure all our native wildlife exists in ecologically meaningful population sizes to have resilient, functioning ecosystems against the threats of climate change. I hope the Flagstaff City Council will be unified in your voice to support the Endangered Species Act and welcome endangered Mexican gray wolves back to our region as one of the many species that need to be restored to this place. My wish is that everyone in our town can appreciate a sense of wonder from having fully functioning intact ecosystems where wolves and wildlife are free to live out their lives and play their role. May we celebrate the return of cows from the San Francisco peaks to the Grand Canyon. Thank you for recognizing that some of the most vulnerable of our wild neighbors are a vital part of our community as well and need the support of elected officials in order to be recognized, supported, and recovered in our region. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have, Councilmember Salas has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here. Could you speak to efforts in engaging the Arizona Game and Fish Wildlife Department about recovering and protecting the Mexican gray wolf?
The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is the federal agency that has the authority to recover endangered species. Arizona Game and Fish Department is our state wildlife agency that is a cooperating agency on most endangered species recovery programs, but they're not ultimately the federal agency in charge. As a cooperating agency, they have asked for a lot of compromises to kind of fit their model of managing wildlife, so that sometimes comes into conflict with what the science is actually saying wildlife actually needs.
Yeah, thank you for that response, but is there room for improvement in terms of, is there room for improvement or engagement or pursue meaningful collaboration with the, of course, with the local, they have a local office here in Flagstaff with Game and Fish as a major partner in this effort? Because I would, I would, you know, and I would like to hope that there is, and I would actually, later, I would like to add into the language, also engage the game and fish and wildlife, AZGDA, Arizona Game and Fish Department, right? Yeah.
Yeah, did you want me to respond, or?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, I mean, I think if they are supportive of the Endangered Species Act and all endangered species recovery in the state, I think that's fantastic. We often see that the Endangered Species Act is used somewhat as a political bargaining chip between state wildlife agencies and the federal government. So especially in the last four years, there were a lot of threats against the Endangered Species Act, and gray wolves nationwide were actually delisted from the Endangered Species Act under the Trump administration. So that's under review right now, and that did not actually affect the Mexican gray wolf, which is a distinct subspecies. But we do know the way wolves are managed, and this is just one case study of many endangered species, there's often a conflict of interest between state wildlife agencies and the way they manage predators, because a lot of times they're focused on selling hunting tags for the prey of predators. And so, they can be very heavy-handed management across the country and states wherever wolves occur can be really dwindled back to diminish population. So it tends to be kind of a conflict of interest, in particular with wolves, and they strongly advocate the I-40 boundary in Arizona, whereas that's something we know scientists have asked to be changed. So it's just a sample of kind of the background with Arizona Game and Fish on wolves in particular.
Councilmember Shmuni.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Emily and City Manager, for bringing this forward, and Councilmember Rasslin, and all that I have worked on this. Very exciting. I really appreciate your work with the Grand Canyon Wolf Recovery Project and your advocacy with the city of Flagstaff. You know, I often, you know, this council often speaks about those communities and those populations that don't have a voice here. And so, I just want to recognize that, you know, I appreciate you speaking up on a population that doesn't have a voice here, and your work. And I'm very hopeful that this council will be moving forward with this, and that we'll make this, it's that wolf's home here in northern Arizona. Hopefully, we can find him a house. I know it's costly. I'm just kidding. But I really appreciate your work, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. An awesome mask, by the way. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. That concludes my report, and again, thank you for giving me so much time.
And with that, we just need to be giving direction, correct? As slated, then it's not a motion, so.
I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up.
I'm seeing thumbs up for proceeding with the current resolution. Councilmember Salas?
Yeah, I would like to support the draft resolution with an added, with an added phrase on the last paragraph to also include advocacy with the state, specifically the Game and Fish Department. So therefore, it be resolved that the Flagstaff City Council strongly supports the Endangered Species Act and encourages the United States Congress and the Arizona Game and Fish and Wildlife Department to maintain its funding and enforcement while working to promote the restoration of threatened and endangered species in northern Arizona.
Can I raise a point? With that wording, it indicates that the Arizona Game and Fish maintains funding for and enforcement of the Endangered Species Act, and it is my understanding that they provide neither.
So, Mayor and Council, if you wanted to include a phrase there for the Arizona State Legislature, I don't know if they provide funding either, though, and that's a question that, just simply semantics, who is it that provides the funding and ensures that that funding stream continues?
That's why we have you as our city attorney, yes.
I understand that's what you're getting to, right, Councilmember Salas?
Yeah, state legislature, so it provides policy and funding, so.
If that's the case, I don't know, I'm just assuming.
Let's look into it a little bit. I'm certainly open to including something more local or at the state level, if it's appropriate and it's worded right.
So let's say that if it's appropriate, if they are involved in the funding process, we will add in the Arizona State Legislature, not the U.S. Congress, and leave it simply with that. Encourage the United States Congress and state legislature to maintain its funding and enforcement, et cetera.
I understood it was both. Leave the United States Congress, but add the Arizona piece as well. Okay, great, great.
And add the state if they're involved in it. Otherwise, and I think, yeah, I'd be happy to support that, but, Vice Mayor?
I, too, would support anything that, where we could add in a local legislative body. Just another thing, the Endangered Species Act is a federal law, and so the Arizona Legislature wouldn't have any purview in terms of enforcing it.
And, Mayor, Council, that is why if they don't have any say in it whatsoever, then the change wouldn't be made. The resolution is written toward the Endangered Species Act and U.S. Congress. As a result, if there's a flow-through of funding, that may be appropriate, but we'll look into that and make sure. Thank you.
But otherwise, let's just proceed with the letter as stated. So, sound good, Council? All right, we got...
I have one last comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
Since we are in this discussion, perhaps it's time for us to consider, to add this item to our state and federal legislative priorities.
We can do that, and that will be a subject of a future council meeting in the not-too-distant future, so I know Sarah Langley is listening wherever she is, and we'll make sure that that's added to the list.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 7, which is our COVID-19 update. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just plug in my computer here, so we can see the presentation. Apparently, I'm all thumbs today. We'll, as usual, be reviewing the data from Coconino Health and Human Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, and then going over the data for the Navajo Nation and the Hopi Tribe, as well as Indigenous Nation updates with Rose Tohe. So our COVID-19 weekly cases have increased originally, the week of October 9th was 353 cases. You'll see on the screen before you, that's been increased to 410 for the week of October 9th, and increased again the week of October 23rd to 500 cases. Flagstaff is seeing an uptick over the last week in the Flagstaff area, followed by the next highest group is our tribal nations. Hospital admissions have been staying relatively steady over the last four to five weeks. The change that we've seen was back in October, we were seeing a large group, 20 to 44 age as now, we are seeing a 65 and older age group as our highest population who are being hospitalized due to COVID. Our COVID-19-related deaths have been updated for the week of October 9th from zero to two, and most recently, October 23rd, there has been one death reported. There is sometimes a couple-week delay, so I'll continue to keep you updated as those previous weeks change. Our community transmission rate remains high. Our number of incidents per 100,000 residents increased from 249.5 to 353.4 over the last two weeks. Our percent positivity rate for COVID cases increased from 6.8% to 8.6%. And lastly, our COVID-like illness has increased from 6.4% over the past two weeks to 7.1%. The good news is, is our percentage of community members that are vaccinated here in Coconino County has also increased from 59.7% to 60.9%. The variants include samples through the month of September. We have not seen anything hit the weekly report for the month of October yet. Our Delta variant continues to be the most dominant, but we've seen a slower increase over the last two weeks. It went from 1,110 to only 1,118. So it definitely has slowed over the last couple of weeks. Our northern Arizona healthcare, we are seeing a change in the bed availability. As of October 9th, we had 44 available beds in the hospital. That's increased to 64 beds available, and there were zero in critical care, where we now have two. Want to update you on how to read this report. I've spoken to Northern Arizona Healthcare's Public Relations Office. You see the bed capacity up in the top right-hand corner, so for hospital capacity, it shows 268. What you do is you take that 268, you subtract the 204, and that tells you how many beds are open for new patients. And then the same would apply for critical care capacity, 41 minus the 39. So I will turn it over to Rose to talk about our Navajo Nation.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So for Navajo Nation, you can see there on the data sheet that in the past 16 days, the total tested was over 16,000, and then negative tests cases have been at 12,580 for the last 16 days. Confirmed positive cases have increased by 253, and recovery is at 1,642, and deaths increased by 21. Next to Navajo, or Hopi Tribe, these are, total tests have increased by 366. Negative tests are coming in at 296, and then an additional 61 cases of, for positive cases. And then of these, 55 are Hopi tribal members. And then for the next slide, I'm seeing the nations update. Well, anyway, I'll just go ahead. They're kind of on top of each other, it seems like. All right, so now I see it. So for Navajo Nation, the public health orders remains the same, which is emphasizing safer-at-home order and updating, and then also limiting gathering limits as far as the public health order has stated. Wearing masks in public continues to be mandatory. And then also, as far as the health advisory for 48 communities, there has been a report of uncontrolled spread of COVID-19 and was issued for 48 communities, which is up by 15 communities since last report. Schools serving, schools that are being served by these communities need to implement layers of mitigation to meet the high level of the COVID-19 community transmission. And then on to the implementation of ARPA funds. So the American Rescue Plan proposal includes funds for infrastructure, direct services, and hardship assistance. And Navajo Nation President Nez and Division Directors have met with the Navajo Nation Council, as well as Speaker Damon and Navajo Nation Chief Justice Jane. And these are to further strategies for the full implementation of the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Funds, which is FRF. And these are authorized through the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. So with these numbers, there is 20 million allocated for broadband, 20 to... So with these numbers, there is 20 million allocated for broadband, 200 or 200 million for broadband, and 200 million for water and wastewater projects, 160 million for power lines, and then 140 million for bathroom additions, 80 million for housing, and 220 for chapter projects, 80 million for educational initiatives, and 80 million for wellness centers and detox center, senior citizen and transitional housing, 80 million for social services, and 90 million for economic development, 20 for tourism, and 100 million for enterprises. So those are how those are allocated at this point. Once everything is going forward, these numbers may change. So I just want to let Council know that. As far as Hopi Tribe is concerned, next slide. They are, the only news I have that's still the same, is continuing with the the third phase of opening, which is currently recommends continued face masking inside all public buildings in common areas and outdoor locations where all where fiscal distancing isn't possible. The executive order also states that employers may resume unrestricted staffing of work sites, and businesses must be able to demonstrate workplace settings that bill and that build in social distances and protection of staff. So that's what I have for my portion of the report. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us updated and our Indigenous partners. Thanks, Rose. That's all that we have for you this evening. Council is certainly here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Council? I'm not seeing any at this time. Thank you, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rose. All right, that brings us down to Agenda Item. Make sure I'm not skipping. Oh, yep, Council Liaison Reports. We'll go around the room here. Councilmember Aslan, anything to report?
No.
Shimonie?
Yes, just a couple of things. Yesterday marked our one-year anniversary of the Coconino County 911 Divergent Review Group that has been meeting. And so we're a year in, which was kind of shocking to me, but we've diverted successfully 80-plus calls from our police department to the Crisis Response Network out of Phoenix, the CRN, of which they typically can handle a call over the phone. But if they need to dispatch a mobile unit, they will dispatch Terrors. So Terrors, our local crisis response team will does get dispatched, but typically CRN handles the calls over the call and and is able to support the individual need. And that's just great. And I just wanted to also just give the update that we're looking into ways to expand those numbers, and we're looking at things that are almost like pilot efforts down in other municipalities around the state with the CRN, Crisis Response Network. So our chief and our team are at the table and are listening and are open to exploring some of these other alternatives that other communities are doing, and I'm looking forward to the work ahead. And then secondly, Mountain Line last week had a special board meeting, of which Council Member Sweet and I were both at, and it was a review of our General Manager Heather Domoland, who has been doing a great job for the community and for Mountain Line, and it's been a pleasure to work with her. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank our City Manager and those who helped with that evaluation process. It was a very inclusive evaluation that I really felt was done well, and the board very much appreciated the support and engagement of our community partners that that engaged in her review. So those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick one, and of course, it's about the Housing Commission. The last day to submit your public comment on the draft 10-year housing plan is this Friday, so I encourage people who have been making their way through the plan to get their comments in. And again, the link to submit your comments is on the website under Residents, Affordable Housing, and then you can find the link for the plan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have nothing to report. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow is the Metro Plan Meeting, Executive Board. That's the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'll also note that last Thursday, Jeff Malbec, who's the executor for the Metro Plan, had a meeting to review a survey that's going to be sent out to all county, well, all FMPO residents, which is larger than the city of Flagstaff, includes a lot of the county, to go over questions involving what their priorities are for transportation, what their interests are. Do they care about bicycles? Do they care about pedestrians? We know they do. But to document it. And so that was a kind of a divisive meeting because we had a lot of different inputs, but I think we kind of came to a good conclusion on what those questions should entail. And so that survey will be going out soon. The FMPO had already funded a survey for the city of Flagstaff, but now what's happening is that we're going to interview people in the whole FMPO, in other words, in the county also. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the NACOG meeting down in Sedona last week, and a big takeaway that I had was that our Head Start program is very, very short-staffed, and it's definitely of concern. They play a huge part in our community, as well as in our region. And County Supervisor Geronimo Vasquez and I are going to be going to the Head Start facilities here in Flagstaff to remind the staff about getting vaccinated so that we're all set for the looming federal deadline in January. And I just really hope that we can get this program better staffed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the annual Discover Flagstaff Tourism and Economic Vitality Stakeholder and Partner Event. That's a mouthful. So I have I have been attending that event for many years, and it strengthened my firm belief that tourism is an inherently integral economic pillar in our community. #TourismMatters. #Tourism is the frontier to economic vitality. So just a quick review, that the the impact of the tourism sector reaches over 9,000 jobs that directly serve our visitors. It positively impacts over 9,000 families. And this drives the pipeline revenue to attractions, events, venues, hotels, restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, retail stores, bookstores, one-of-a-kind gift shop, and even businesses that you may not think would benefit from tourism dollars, such as auto repair shops and bed stores. So the multiplier effect of tourism dollars in our community extends to the tune of $750 million. That means the city would not have the funds to provide the level of services for clean and safe parks, recreational facilities, open spaces, educational programs, trails, cultural experiences, beautification, public arts, arts and sciences, that we, our families, and our neighbors enjoy if it were not for the tourism sector and the bed, board, and beverage BBB tax revenue it brings to our beloved town. So the phenomenal Discover Flagstaff team and community partners have been delivering outstanding work to keep the regional economy vibrant and resilient, and more significantly, respect and protect the wild places. We have Pledge for the Wild that draws visitors to our destination. So #PledgeForTheWild, that direct that direct financial pledges, 100% of financial pledges and contributions contribution to #FlagstaffTrailsInitiative. This was recognized for exemplary community partnership at the Governor's Tourism Conference in early August this year. At that same event, Canyon Jablee Distillery was also recognized for its pivotal efforts in producing hand sanitizers that were delivered for free to the Navajo and Hopi reservations. So I work closely with our Tourism Commission and our Discover Flagstaff in attracting a quality of visitor who share in our values, who is interested in our culture, spends multiple days exploring our community and shopping with our local stores, and of course, more importantly, respect our wild places. So I just want to take a moment to thank with my grateful heart all our stakeholders and partners with tourism and economic vitality, because they have faced challenges and difficulties brought by the pandemic in the last 20 months with tremendous resiliency and a deep sense of community. So just remember, visit, discover, and grow. This is the essence of economic vitality and tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. Under Agenda Item 9A, this is the Liquor License Public Hearing, so consideration and action on liquor license application for Dara Sprints Wong, Vino Loco, 22 East Birch Avenue, Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Owner Transfer. Like to open the public hearing and have a staff staff presentation if you have any comments.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Ms. Wong. We will definitely get right to you after the staff presentation. Thank you.
Perfect.
Can you guys hear?
Yes.
Okay. Brian Turley with the Flagstaff Police Department, here to answer any questions you may have regarding the application in front of you. I found no derogatory records with the applicant applicant or the application. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wong, if you'd like to say a word, a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Dara Wong. I have owned Shift Kitchen and Bar for six years, where there's a Series 12 liquor license there. And now I just recently purchased Vino Loco, so would love to continue the opportunity to sell on-premise and off-premise wine and beer. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Wong. Do we have any questions, Council? All right, well, we do not have any public comments aside from that. Well, I would like to close the public hearing then and move to forward the application of the state with a recommendation for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Before we get into the consent items, I'd like to take a bit of a break here. As IT is dealing with a few issues right now, I'd like to put it at a 20-minute break. So at 5:07, we will start right back up. Thank you. On the technical side, able to start off again here?
Yes, Mayor, we've reset the system. Hopefully, that helps out a little bit, but we're back on and running.
All right, sounds good. Well, we are down to Agenda Item Number 10. This is our consent items, and I'd like to move to approve all of the three consent items. Three.
I'll second that.
I would like to pull Item C, as in Charlie.
All right, well, we do have a motion to for the other two.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion on those two? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Councilmember McCarthy, 10C, and I'll just, so everyone knows, is the APS Level 2 Electric Vehicle Charging Pilot Agreement for a new location at the city's Flagstaff Visitor Center.
Okay, I am supportive of building these sites, but my question is sustainability. Is it financially sustainable to give out free power, to let people fill up their tank, so to speak, with electricity? And, you know, I don't think we can do that forever. I mean, what's the plan? Is this a short-term thing or a long-term thing? Or I wonder if Nicole could come down and talk to us. Is Nicole in the house?
While Nicole's coming to the podium, I will note, for background, we had this discussion internally before we implemented the EV stations here at City Hall, and I was a strong advocate then, and I think others were as well. I'll let Nicole speak on her own behalf, but I was a strong advocate for having the free energy, at least during an inaugural period, to get people incentivized to using it and to actually incentivize EVs as a general comment. But Nicole?
Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director, and thank you, Mayor, City Manager Clifton. We have an opportunity here to assess after a year, and that was what we had identified as an internal process, is to look at what those costs were and then make a decision based after they are installed for a year. And we had originally talked about that with the City Hall charging stations, and then the pandemic hit. So we're not sure that the data that we have is truly representative. So with these charging stations, we feel that we will actually have a really good data set to make a determination in the future.
So then, what, six months or a year from now, or something like that, we'll evaluate how much it's costing and anyway, okay. So I move to approve Item 10C.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just I just appreciate, I want to articulate my appreciation for Councilmember McCarthy's questions. I do recall when when Council had this discussion in January, the first, when when we approved the the first contract, I did bring up the cost issue. And I do I do recall staff saying, this is like an introductory, an introductory promo to encourage the use of electric vehicle, as well as getting the word out of the this new city service. However, to for it to be to be self-sufficient and sustainable, I also want to think that an electric vehicle owner or driver can afford to pay for the electricity to use to charge the car. So I am with you, Councilmember McCarthy, and also with with staff in pursuing that review in a few months and in terms of identifying the direct cost. In addition, in addition to the one-time cost of installing the 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 charging station, and thanks to the partnership in APS, as well as the annual cost in terms of maintaining the different locations and what's the direct cost in terms of the electricity being used to charge the EVs? Thank you.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. And Nicole, are we going to be tracking those data points?
We are, absolutely. And and that is why it is so important that we utilize the ChargePoint software, because that will allow us, if the city determines, to ask for a fee for the charging. That will allow us to institute that fee process.
Okay, great. And my only comment in addition to what's been said, which I appreciate and agree with what's been brought up, is I totally support the the trial period, and I love that this is moving forward. I'm very excited about it. But as someone who might not own an electric vehicle myself, because I can afford it, I do also think that those who can afford it can afford to pay for it. But I do see the value in in this this trial period and in this approach that we're taking. So thank you for your work on this, and thank you to all that have been involved, and Heidi and her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. All right, with that, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are down to Agenda Item Number 11A. This is our routine items. This is the consideration approval of preliminary plat request from Hunt Beaver LLC for preliminary plat approval for Beaver Street condominiums, case number PG17-00187-04, for eight residential condominium units located at 613 North Beaver Street on one-third of an acre to be developed using the T4N1 transect zone standards. Staff recommended action is to, staff recommends based on the required findings and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval on October 13th. and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval on October 13, 2021, by a 6-0 vote, the City Council approved the preliminary plat. Take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Genevieve Pearthree, Senior Planner with the Current Planning Section, and I'm here to present this case. Okay, oh, there we go. Thank you. This request is from Hunt Beaver LLC. It's for preliminary plat approval for an eight-unit residential condominium subdivision. It's located at 613 North Beaver Street on 0.33 acres in the T4N1 transect zone. So the purpose of this plat is to create individually-owned units. So right now, it's approved as multifamily housing, so this plat will allow the units to be sold individually by creating ownership or potential to own the airspace within each unit, plus the limited common elements associated with each unit, which in this case are the decks and driveways. So again, it's at 613 North Beaver Street, so this is several blocks north of here. A little bit more about the development, it's for eight three-bedroom, four-bathroom units. They're about 2,000 square feet and 2,600 square feet. Let me know if you're having trouble seeing that. The development, again, has already been approved. It's permitted by right in the T4N1 zone, so this means that it has an approved site plan, it has approved building permits, approved civil plans, public improvement permits, et cetera. So it's permitted as multifamily housing, so again, this plat is just to be able to sell off the units individually. So here is the preliminary plat, so we can see there are eight units, the ones, and there are four in the front and four in the back. The ones in the back have driveways associated with them, and all the units have decks and porches as well. So I mentioned previously that the plat creates the ability to sell off each unit individually, so to do that, we have to identify the horizontal and the vertical boundaries of each unit, so that's what the plat does. There's two different types of units. There are six that are one width and six that are another, so these horizontal boundaries right here show the boundaries of the different units, and this one shows the vertical boundary. So each unit is three stories, and this shows where the floor plates are, so we have an exact understanding of the airspace associated with each unit. So these are the building elevations. They were approved at site plan, so they're for reference only, but just to give you an understanding of what it looks like. So there's 18-feet-wide buildings, units, six of them are 18-feet wide, so that's what I'm showing right now. And then there's two that are 24-feet wide, so that's what those building elevations look like. So findings for approval for subdivision plats are that they have to meet three findings. The first one is that they meet the zoning code, which is Title 10 of City Code. So this development meets all the relevant building standards for the transect zone. They are required to select a building type, that's the townhouse building, and then a frontage, which is a stoop, so it meets all of the building form and placement requirements that are applicable to this development. For pedestrian and bicycle circulation, it's a walkable area, pedestrian access is off of Beaver Street. They are required to provide 14 parking spaces, and they're providing those also to bike spaces, and they're also providing those, and access to the site is from the alley on the west side of the development. And then their final landscape plan actually was approved with engineering plans, so they're meeting their minimum requirements, which are eight trees, 16 trubs, and 16 ground covers. So the second finding for approval is that it meets the engineering standards, which is Title 13 of City Code. So as part of site plan review, was determined what sort of improvements would be required. The first one from development engineering, so no edge improvements, which would be sidewalk and parkway, in this case were required. That's because in 2018, the City of Flagstaff had a capital project that replaced the sidewalk, so it's basically a new sidewalk. However, the plat will be dedicating a seven-foot easement to allow for a sidewalk and parkway to be built in the future, if that's something that, that needs to happen in the future. It's not happening right now, though. Traffic impact analysis was not required because a low number of buildings do not generate, do not meet the threshold for a TIA. A water sewer impact analysis also is not required because they are creating fewer than 10 new units. And then for stormwater, low-impact development was waived because they're creating less than 5,000 square feet of new impervious surface. The site was previously developed, and so they're not creating much more impervious surface than what was there before. And the last finding for approval is that it meets the subdivision and land split regulations. That's in Title 11 of City Code. They met all the preliminary plat procedures, application requirements, that's where they're here today. They also met the minimum required subdivision improvements, and those were identified in those public systems analyses that I discussed in a previous slide. The last one, subdivision standards and regulations, most of those don't apply to this type of plat because it's not a single-family plat. However, they are dedicating new seven-foot waterline easement per these standards. So in summary, I mentioned there are three findings that plats have to meet, and Planning and Zoning Commission and staff determined that, that meets these findings. So the first one, again, is City Code, which is Title 10, that's the Flagstaff zoning code, City Code Title 11, which is general plans and subdivisions, and City Code Title 13, which is the engineering design standards and specifications. So staff recommends, based on the required findings and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval, that the City Council approve the preliminary plat. So it's all that I have for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions. I believe the applicant and their team are on, and their team are on teams, so if you have any questions for them, they should also be available. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, do we have any questions? Councilmember McCarthy?
Just for curiosity, could you describe the parking in some more detail? Are some of them garages and other ones are like just in the backyard, or where are they?
Let's go back to the plat real quick here. Yeah, so there's garages underneath as well as the driveways here, so they're meeting that.
There's garages underneath on all eight units?
That's correct.
Okay, and then there's, what, each?
Then there's four driveways here, so between the garages.
So there's like three layers, so each garage has like a car from bottom, middle, and top?
That would be even, no, just the garage is just on the first floor. The first floor, half of it's garage, and then the other half is a living space.
And people from all three layers park in that same garage?
Well, actually, each unit is three stories, so, so this is one unit, so the garage is just on the bottom. So each, each one only needs one garage, since it's one unit. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and Heidi, thank you for the presentation. How large is each garage? Is it for one car, two car?
I believe it is for one car, except for these units that are larger, have two.
Okay, and where, can you point out where the bicycle, the two bicycle-only racks are?
Those are actually not showed here. They were shown on civil plans, and I don't have a copy of that, but I can get you that after this presentation if you'd like.
Okay, and I'm just trying to think in my head if the folks who are going to be occupying these places are going to be able to use the garage for their bicycles. I like to think so, so I don't necessarily think there's too much of a push in my own mind for the outdoor parking. I can be swayed, but I think, I think with a garage, we're okay. Can you go back to the slide that spoke to the number, the development overview, the development summary?
There you go.
Okay, so, okay, my slides are a little bit off. So three-bedroom, four-bath, that's what I thought I heard, and that definitely struck a chord in me that wasn't the most positive. I don't know if I've seen three-bedroom, four-baths. Can you talk to that?
Sure. It's because the first floor has part garage and then a bedroom with a bathroom on the first floor, and then the second floor is basically just a living space with no bedrooms on the second floor, but they do have a bathroom, and then there's two bedrooms on the top floor, and each one of them have a bathroom. So it's just kind of the unique, the three stories plus the garage on the first floor that lead to this kind of interesting bedroom-bathroom mix.
And have you seen this often?
I haven't, but I think it's a tight site. It's an infill development. They have to use transect zone standards, a specific building type, they have to meet parking standards, so I think it was just a creative way to make, to fit all of those pieces onto the site.
So are you saying that there's a possibility to do the same with less bathrooms?
Yes, but I don't know. I think that's just a choice by the architect and the developer.
And they're on the call, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would be curious to hear their thoughts. When I see more bathrooms than bedrooms, I think the cost is going to be high. I'm not a developer, but what I've heard is that the more bathrooms you build, the more money it's going to cost to the renter or the owner. And so I just wonder, for the sake of trying to make Flagstaff affordable for our workforce, if the developer would be open to maybe lessening that bathroom count to making these units more affordable for our, for the population?
So I'm happy to let the developer answer that, but I will jump in real quick first as that I mentioned that it already has site plan approval. They already have building permits in place, so they're already under construction. So this is just for the ownership, so we're, the design stuff was, has already been worked out.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Mayor and Council, just when the preliminary plat comes to you, the site approval's already occurred, and they're typically building permits already in place, so that, that is the case here as well.
Well, look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to summarize, right now, it could, it's basically a multifamily development, just a typical multifamily, so this plat is the first step in allowing the owner to be able to sell each unit individually. That's all we're looking at.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Sure, no problem.
Any further questions, Council? Side for them, happy to entertain a motion if you'd like.
I move to approve Item 11A.
I'll second that.
All right, have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now down to Agenda Item 11B. This is the consideration and possible action to unsuspend Rule 5.01 of the City of Flagstaff City Council Rules of Procedures. Staff recommended action is to unsuspend Rule 5.01 of the City of Flagstaff City Council Rules of Procedure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. I do not have a formal presentation on this item or the next item. I am available for any questions on the unsuspension of the rules. We discussed this last week. This is a formality to lift the suspension that we've been operating under in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, I have any questions if, if necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Salzberg. Any further questions, Council? Then I would like to move to unsuspend Rule 5.01.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 11C is the consideration of possible adoption of City Council Rules of Procedure. Staff recommended action is to approve the City Council Rules of Procedure dated November 2, 2021. I move to approve the City Council Rules of Procedure. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Those rules will become effective next week.
Thank you much. Agenda Item Number 12A, it's our regular agenda, is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-48, a resolution approving the designation of an applicant agent and authorizing the agent to apply for and sign on behalf of the City of Flagstaff for the receipt of funds from the Arizona Division of Emergency Management and Military Affairs Public Assistance Programs. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-48 by title only.
Grants, contracts, and emergency management disaster recovery. This item, we have currently have a applicant agent form in place. It has Greg Clifton and myself listed. However, the Department of Emergency Management has requested that we drop it down to just one emergency contact that has direct knowledge of the events and the programs, so we thought it would be best to have it just designate me as the applicant agent as a single point of contact to answer any questions with Dima as we work through events past and current. Also, the form will update it to have you, as the current mayor, sign off on it. It had the prior mayor, so that'll update the form. This form covers all of Department of Emergency Management events past and current, all their different disaster recovery programs, and it doesn't have a term date on the form, it just gets updated at the time that you designate a new applicant agent. And with that, any questions? Thank you.
Stacy, Council, do you have any, any questions? All right, well, I'm happy to entertain a motion. Who's going to jump at it?
I'll do it. I move that the city clerk read Resolution 2021-48 by title only.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the designation of an applicant agent and primary point of contact.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-48.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, we are now down to the-
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-48.
We did.
Yeah, we got that.
We did the reading and the adoption both.
Maybe I've been asleep.
That's okay.
No worries. We're down to Agenda Item 12B. This is the consideration and approval of a letter of support for Coconial County Board of Supervisors Preferred Legislative Districts Map and Redistricting Procedures Moving Forward. Staff recommend action is to approve letter of support and provide direction regarding redistricting procedures moving forward. And I just want to also check before we get started if Matt Ryan and Patrice Horstman and Steve Perou are online still, just in case we have questions or clarifications from the county's end.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Sarah Langley, Interim Public Affairs Director. As you know, there's been a lot of very fast-paced work done by the Independent Redistricting Commission, or the IRC, recently. As an update, last week, the Commission adopted draft congressional and legislative maps, so that then kickstarts the 30-day public comment period, which will likely include a listening tour, although they haven't released the dates for that yet, so we're looking out for those dates. So in response to the draft maps, the Coconial County Board of Supervisors has created a preferred version of the legislative map. Staff received a request from a council member to have a discussion to see if a majority of council would support voicing the county's support, or sorry, the council's support for the county's preferred map, and sending a letter to the IRC voicing that support. So the draft letter, as well as the county's preferred map, and links to the IRC's approved draft maps have been included in the agenda packet. And I just wanted to make a quick note that the letter in your agenda packet references the IRC's draft legislative map version 8.0. That was the current version on Thursday when we were putting that together. It's now been updated to version 10.0, and that's what was officially adopted by the Commission, so we've adjusted that in the letter just for your reference. So with that, I will turn it over to yourselves for discussion and direction. Thank you.
Thank you much. Is there a way we could post up the maps as we discuss this onto the screen, please?
Would you want to see the, the IRC's approved map?
Both, please, if they could be, so we can kind of see, have the public be able to see one one to another.
The IRC's map and the county's map.
Yes, please.
Gotcha. All right. So this is the IRC's map here. All right, let me know if I need to zoom in or out for your reference.
I think that's, I think that's solid there.
All right.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know how much everyone has been following, but it has been a very, very rapid pace on the changes and the inputs that the IRC has been receiving. And if you also notice in the IRC report, it provides a table, I don't know if other members of council saw, on how competitive each of the districts are. And basically, the three districts that surround Flagstaff or are in Flagstaff right now basically are a guaranteed seat, two Republican, one Democrat. They're completely uncompetitive. It also is, as you can see in this map, for example, with IRC, which is on the right, Kajina Village is not even part of Flagstaff's district, and one of the things that we had discussed previously with our letter- And one of the things that we had discussed previously with our letters was to keep Flagstaff whole. I mean, when, when we're dealing with wildfires that hit our same Kajina Village neighbors, when we are at the same center of commerce for this surrounding community, it makes sense for us to be together. And that's one thing that, if you recall in prior letters and support that we all were previously advocating as for council. So this is a bit rather concerning to me. And that I do really like the county's map that does keep us whole. It also keeps whole Yavapai County together, or the, sorry, not Yavapai County, but Verde Valley together, the greater of Flagstaff together, as well as the Navajo Nation together. People of like interests facing similar difficulties, being centers of commerce. Anyways, as you all likely know, I am personally, I'm in support of the county, but county's map, it provides a lot more competitive districts, which I think we all want to see, as well as aligns the values and values of the community that's within those state legislative districts. We do have Supervisor Horstman, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Matt Ryan, as well as Steve Peru on the line for any questions that counsel may have on the county maps. Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah, I've read the letter and reviewed the maps, and I am supportive of the letter.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to invite Supervisor Horstman and Chair Ryan to just comment on where we are in the process and, and their thoughts and concerns about what's being presented and being discussed tonight.
Yeah. I'm seeing Matt, Matt on the screen there, if you'd like to start. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Councilmember Shumoni, in response to the question, and you know, I have Steve and Patrice to back me up, but the, the IRC went through listening sessions to develop their map that they put out. This is, Steve's in my, I think it's my third go-round and Steve's fourth go-round on redistricting, I believe. So when they put their initial map together, it starts to lock in. And so that initial phase is over, so now they're going to have a 30-day hearing period. And Sarah could obviously update you on their procedures. They have hosted for a town hall for this Saturday. That will be a Zoom, I believe a Zoom opportunity for comments. And what we're encouraging at this point, we attempted to come up with parameters that fit the definition of the IRC's charge, competitive districts, also looking at the Voting Rights Act, looking at what our previous districts were, trying to align in similar fashion, and noting communities of interest, many other factors. So that we consider to, as we developed our maps. So the next phase of this is, we've got 30 days to try and influence the IRC on modifying their maps to take in the input that we also took from the listening sessions that we saw with the IRC as well, and see if we, as a region, could come together as a coalition and put a strong voice out there. Obviously, you would want to, your interest of your municipality, in this case, the City of Flagstaff, your key points as it relates to you. But there are a lot of unifying factors that we have the potential to continue to advocate together on. Trister, Steve, did you have any?
Just, just real quickly, if I can. And good evening, members of the city council and mayor. It's wonderful to be here with you tonight. For a very important matter, we need your review of this and hopefully your support. As Chair Ryan said, the more we come as a coalition to the IRC, I think the more effective, the most effective we will be. I agree with everything the mayor said in terms of the problems with the current IEC maps. Our map that we provided, and we hope you will strongly support, does provide the competitiveness of our district. It provides the voice for Coconino County, keeps Flagstaff whole, and also protects the indigenous voice. The maps presented by the IRC dilute that indigenous voice. It is very important that we have a voice. Sometimes it's not very strong, but that we have a voice down there at the state legislature, and we believe that the map is presented by Coconino County offers that voice in the legislative districts. And as the chair said, we got 20 days, so time is of the essence. There will be a town hall on Saturday. I think it's important that the mayor and the city council be heard on this, and hopefully, again, you will support our letter. I thought the Arizona Daily Sun in their article did an excellent job breaking down the county's proposed map and why we believe this should be the preferred map from the IRC. So again, thank you, Mayor and council members. It's really an honor to be with you here tonight.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. We do have Vice Mayor has a question or comment?
Well, first, I'd just like to thank the county for taking the lead and creating this map. Thank you. And I'm wondering if-
However you see fit, to be able to speak on your behalf, sometimes you need to be nimble under these circumstances. Every once in a while, the IRC will pause and call you up and ask you questions. And it provides an opportunity to stay to your points, but you can respond to it. So designating a person to speak on your behalf, usually the mayor, would be an idea that I would suggest. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mayor and Councilmember Steve Peru, Coconino County Manager.
Sorry, sorry, County, County Manager. I think we're having some technical glitches, and we had a couple folks on team speaking with, Vice Mayor was speaking as well. So I'd like to turn it to Vice Mayor real quick, and then we'll get back with you.
So I'm not sure whether you heard me. Thank you for taking the lead and creating this map. And I'm wondering if we have information about where the public could find the link for that Zoom meeting and what time it starts?
Just to chime in, yeah, certainly, we can get that from the IRC. I think it's on their website. So, yeah, we can also share that on our social media if we'd like to encourage the public to attend.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. County Manager?
So, yes, Mayor and council members, this is my fourth cycle through redistricting, and since this happens once every 10 years, do the math, I'm an old guy. Very quickly, though, the, the Zoom session that's going to be, it's scheduled for Saturday, this coming Saturday, the information can be found on the IRC website. Individuals must be- up to the press release that was put out by the IRC that the session will last as long as individuals are willing, are there to testify. So I will send this over to city staff, too, because I, we did not actually find this readily on the website this morning. It may have been posted by now, but this actually came through a, through a tweet that we discovered this morning, so, but I will send this to city staff right away.
Thank you. What, what time is it? Do you have that information handy?
It's, it starts at 10, it starts at 10 o'clock on Saturday. Individuals must be registered to speak no later than 9:00 a.m. on that day.
Great. Thank you, County Manager.
But I'll send this over to city staff right away. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I'd like to touch base also after questions to discuss as a council body, make sure that we all support this and any concerns. But Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I have a question. What's going on with Cochise County and the IRC map? The pink area down there? Oh, okay, we weren't zoomed in enough for me to see the district. I mean, zoomed out enough. Thank you. My private question has been answered there. And since I have the mic, I just want to say I wholeheartedly and very urgently support the county map and letter. And I want to echo the Vice Mayor. Thank you for taking the lead on this. We have to be forceful. We have to use the strongest language possible, that this is not acceptable, what we're being presented with right now. And let's move forward as quickly as we can. I'll be there on Saturday.
Thank you, council member. Others to chime in regarding the map? See if we have consensus?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say I also will support, very much support, the, the county's map and our advocacy efforts as a city, as a body, as our spokesperson, and you, the mayor, the Saturday, and throughout this, this process. And also, just want to echo gratitude to the county leadership and Board of Supervisors for working hard on this and ensuring that Flagstaff remains whole. I have heard "whole" being used in a couple ways, and so I am a little concerned about what our definition of "whole" is. I've heard some folks say that the map that's being presented to us by the IRC is, is, is showing us as whole. And I, I definitely see there being a little bit of a difference with what the county is presenting as, as a version of "whole." So I'll just state clearly that I, I support what the county is, is presenting in terms of that wholeness of Flagstaff. I think when we start picking off parts of, of our larger, greater community, even if it's outside of the state limits, it is concerning. And, and it's, it's, it's bad for our overall, overall well-being. And I think it's dangerous for our community moving forward at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for taking the lead, and I definitely support the letter, and I will be attending on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe we have a majority in support of the letter. The next question actually gets back to where we were kind of chopping out. And I, I apologize, County Board Supervisors, we've been having the technical difficulty with our teams' meetings all day. So I did want to circle back and with Chairman Ryan, who is speaking to the need to designate an individual potentially to help with this, being nimble towards this process moving forward. Because we only, we only heard part of it. Thank you. Chairman Ryan? I do believe, you're muted, or at least audibly.
Hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Supervisor.
All right. Matt, maybe you are muted then?
Yeah.
If you can, just to indicate, we have designated the chair and the vice chair to represent us. You know, obviously, I think it's important that we speak forcefully with a united voice. And so I do think that the mayor and another designate from the city council, Vice Mayor, would be similar to what we are doing, and would be the very best and most, most forceful. Having said that, I would highly recommend, which I will be doing, since I will not be speaking, I will, in fact, provide written comment. I would highly recommend that all members of the city council also provide written comment to the IRC. And I've listed it on my website, and I think it's going to be provided from your staff members for you all to be able to list for your residents and constituents who may also want to provide written comment.
Yeah, can you hear me or no?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. And the point was, sometimes the commission will ask the spokesperson to step up and ask them a question. That's where you need to be nimble and designate a speaker, or in our case, we have the chair and vice chair speaking, so we can respond to them while they're making decisions. So to designate your spokesperson would be really important, so they could stay to your key points, but convey that message while the IRC's making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ryan. And this would then basically, rather than giving the weight of one politician, allow for us to act as, the designees as the council body, that this is what we would like to see. And it would be in alignment with what we have stated in the past altogether, that these are the values we would like to see. I, I have been talking to Chairman Ryan quite regularly about this the last couple months, and I've been involved through this process. And I, I would personally like to be the spokesperson, as well as anyone else who would be available, as well as a secondary designee for, in case of anything, that we have somebody there to speak on our behalf as a council body. Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that, Chair Ryan. Yeah, I, I agree, and I support you-
I don't know if you can hear us, we've lost you, though.
We can hear you. Can you hear me? All right, I'm going to keep talking.
I think that's a no.
So I was just saying that I totally support you being our spokesperson, and if Vice Mayor is willing to be there as well and, and kind of tag-team that with you, I support you all working together as our spokespeople for our council body and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes, I believe that the mayor and the vice mayor would be excellent representatives for, speaking for the whole council. I heard that.
Thank you, council members, for your, for your faith in us to speak to all of our hearts, which I think are very much in line, competitive for this kind of, yeah, very important decision that's going to shape our politics for the next 10 years. Councilmember Sweet, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was just going to agree that the two of you would be great representatives of our council.
Thank you. Do we have any, yeah, Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I think that's an excellent decision to present in a unified front. Also, though, as I said, please remember, make your written comments and encourage others to do the same. We have 20 days, let's maximize it. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Supervisors and County Manager. And, yes, let, oh, sorry, Ms. Salzberg.
Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that we do have a public comment on this item.
Oh, yes, thank you. Michelle James, if you'd like to chime in.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Michelle James, Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. Thank you for digging my comments. FQ would like to express our support of a legislative map submitted by the Coconino County Board of Supervisors to the Independent Redistricting Commission on October 27th. The county's map preserves the City of Flagstaff as a community of interest. This is important as our city and the surrounding region move to address and adapt to the ecological and social impacts of climate change, including increasing risk of large wildfires. It's imperative to the future of Flagstaff that our specific issues and needs are represented in the legislature. Additional issues that unite the greater Flagstaff area and nearby communities include the lack of affordable housing for our workforce, the impact of short-term rentals and second homes, and the imperative to reduce our carbon emissions. It's important that Flagstaff maintains our political voice, and the county's map achieves this by maintaining Flagstaff as a community of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. All right, and that was just the one public comment, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Anything further before we move along, counsel? Thank you for joining us from the county, and we're moving right along here to our-
Mayor and counsel, it would be good if you approved that letter with a motion.
We need a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
I move that we approve the letter of support with the, the wording that was in the packet, with the minor change about the 10.0 instead of 8.0.
Second.
That, motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And just to clarify, City Attorney, that we don't need that for the direction aspect of being able to have a spokesperson. Is that correct?
No, no. It would just be to approve the letter.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we're on board here.
Thanks, Mayor.
Just as an afterthought, I'm wondering if we could change the wording to say that this was unanimously approved by council.
That's clerical, I think that's fine.
That's a, a minor clerical item. I think that would be a good addition. Now, I'm seeing head nods. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good call. All right, we're down to- All right, we're down to the discussion item 13A.
Oh, wait, I think I just saw Supervisor Horseman raise her hand, or she's saying goodbye. Okay.
Yeah, one of those. One of those nights, technical difficulties. All right, agenda item 13A is the discussion about 2022 potential bond ballot measures. Staff will seek council feedback on methods for collecting residents' feedback, desire to add infrastructure-related ballot items for further consideration, any dollar limitations for the bond recommendations, and how council would like recommendations to be packaged by the Citizen Bond Committee. Deputy City Manager?
Hello, Mayor and council. Thanks for being with us tonight. I'm here along with city staff to present information on the 2022 potential bond ballot Rick Tatter will be leading us through the general obligation bond conversation. I will discuss where we are in the process with the potential bond ballot measures, city council identified at the April budget retreat, capital improvements and engineering. Water Services staff, as well as Public Safety staff members, will join us to share information about additional infrastructure, bond projects council may want to consider for a 2022 election. And lastly, staff have some specific questions for council, so we can obtain direction to continue moving this process forward. I will turn it over to Rick for his presentations on general bonds.
Thanks, Shannon. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director for City of Flagstaff. Some of this information that you hear tonight is a repeat of what we kind of talked about in April, at the April retreat. Just going over the guidelines on general obligation bonds. As we know, general obligation bonds are a form of debt financing that the city is allowed to do. But for the purpose of using these, we must get voter approval prior to issuing this type of debt. And the city may issue a secondary property tax levy to pay back general obligation bonds as approved by voters. When it comes to secondary property tax, the only purpose the city has for adopting a secondary property tax is to pay back general obligation bond debt, again, voter-approved. Assess valuations within the state. Individual properties can only increase by 5% annually, just informationally. And we are only allowed to assess annually the amount we have to pay in debt services for that fiscal year, plus a small contingency for changes in uncollectible accounts. So when bonding, you always want to think about, are you bonding for capital projects or operational costs? Things like building, equipment, those are like capital assets that are one-time expenditures. There may be maintenance that we want to assure we fund ongoing in other methods, but those are usually the one-time types of projects you want to have on a bond consideration. We are also allowed to bond and do things for things, like staffing, maintenance, building maintenance, and other types of things that may be more of an ongoing expense in the long run, but it's not necessarily recommended, but it is allowed. We just have to be concerned that once the bonds are spent and paid, we no longer have that resource available. It also has an impact on the debt that we issue, because this would be a taxable-type issue, which is fine. It may add a half a percent or maybe a little bit more to that financing, but it is something that is allowable. These next two slides are in your packet, is the list of historical bond measures that the city has brought forward to the voters for consideration, going back to 1996. Here, they're listed out with a dollar amount and whether they did pass or fail the voter approvals. I'm not going to go through these, this was just informational for your packet. So now I want to just briefly talk about limits. What are our limits for general obligation bonds? There's really a couple ways we look at this. One is the state statutes, the state mandates that cap what we're allowed to issue in general obligation bond debt. So there's two limitations. One is 20% of your assessed valuations, and those are allowed for water, sewer, the items listed here on the presentation, for those types of projects that the city may bring forward. I do need to note, I made an update to this slide because my numbers were reflected from March before we did our year-end process. And at this time, we have a capacity under this limitation, about $197 million net of what we already have outstanding in issuance. Then we have a 6% limitation, and this is kind of that catch-all for things that don't fit within that 20%. Currently, we look at these things as far as housing and possibly climate action-type voter requests to approve ballot measures. The climate actions, we're still working with our legal team and our bond council to determine, some of these do really fit in the 20% versus 6%, but for right now, we're just kind of sitting in that 6% for the conversation. But we'll come back and identify where those do legally bound us in these limitations. We have not issued any debt with a 6%, so we do have the full capacity available here, which is about $71 million in this category. So that's the state, that's the cap that we're allowed to issue in debt and have outstanding in any given year. Now, policy limits. This is what we talk about, what we control as an organization and council, and what we want to vote for in the past. We have a current policy of a tax rate not to exceed .8366 per net assessed valuations. And the reason why we use that as our limit is we've gone to the voters several times, and we've said to the voters, if you approve these types of projects, we will maintain a rate under not to exceed this rate. And we've been very successful since any voter approval underneath that rate. We are allowed to go over that rate, we're not restricted by that, but we have been very successful, and we will continue to be successful maintaining under that rate. Based on current projections of net assessed values in our calculations, we are showing about $107 million in total capacity going out to the years 2044, 2045. So if we went out to a bond issue in November 2022, that's what I see as the cap of amount we can issue and maintain that rate over the long term of our property tax collection on secondary property tax. The current rate we have with the city is actually .8000. And the reason this is, is because we've been good at paying down our debt, and we haven't issued any new debt. And so we've been successful at reducing that rate a little bit over the last two years, last year and this tax year. So that's the current rate we have on our books. And so just to give a measurement of what we would have capacity if we decided, well, that's our new limit, we don't want to go above that rate. Our capacity at that lowers by about $7 million to $100 million mark. So those are just perspectives of what you have to consider as you're bringing ballot measures forward. The next few slides are kind of a visual, trying to help visually understand what I mean by capacity and pay in principal and interest within the rates that we're going to have if voters approve certain levels of bond measures. So this demonstrates the two different policy levels, starting with the $46 million. That's what we have outstanding in our debt right now for projects that have already been approved, already been mostly built. I think all of them have been built. There may be a little bit outstanding on the FWPB money, but those are our debt service payments we currently have on our books. The orange sliver is what we have authorized, but we haven't issued. So we've authorized, voters authorized some debt, but we have not issued the bonds for that consideration. This is for Parks land acquisition that we have. We just have not identified and moved forward with the purchase of land for parks and recreation at this time. So those are the obligations that we feel and we know we have, based on previous voter approval. And then we fill in the remainder with what can we issue in debt over the next several years, and what's the principal amount that we could issue to maintain these rates. So at the .8000 rate, which we are currently at as an organization, we have about $100 million capacity over that length of the tax years. The purple sliver up above shows if you decide you want to go to voters and have the previous policy rate that we've had, .8366, that's that $7 million additional that we could maintain the rate and issue principal on. But I also wanted to talk about the conversation that if you decide as a council and voters approve the full $100 million, and I'm going to go by the 8000 rate for these next couple slides. You know, it's a similar conversation with the two rates, but this is really just a conceptual based on the 8000 rate. If you go to voters and they approve everything, capacity does grow as we move the lever, every two election years, we add about $10 million a year to our available capacity to issue bonds. So if we issue it now, in a couple years, we could gain capacity and look at other projects that we want to fund in the organization. If the voters don't approve the whole amount, that just increases the amount for future ballot measures that are available for council. Then I just want to show example of, if you take $100 million to the voters, or you decide a lower amount, and voters only approve $70 million in projects in the November 2022 election, this shows how capacity also builds over time. We issue up to $70 million, and then in two years, we could have a capacity to have another ballot measures that council may bring forward for about $50 million. So we've got a couple opportunities that we have over time, depending on your decisions and the voters' decision whether they approve these ballot measures. This last slide I added recently with a conversation with our Housing Commission suggestion. They asked me to bring some kind of impact to taxpayers together. So we put this slide together to kind of give you kind of a conceptual idea of a high-level look at what the impacts to a residential taxpayer would be, based on the amount of bonds authorized by the voters. So we have assumptions. We assume a 20-year debt is what we generally issue debt for, and we start at a 5% interest rate, because we don't know exactly what we'll get when we go out in time. I'm just giving you examples, no specific purpose for these three numbers, the $10 million, $25 million, and $70 million bonds, if they were approved by voters. And we're talking specifically about Class III residential. This is your single-home residential properties. This is the average, most recent average we received from our Coconino County assessors, I didn't do growth projections, assessed value growth in these, just because I needed to keep this simple, and it gets really complicated over years as you go forward. So this is kind of a point in time on year one. So here on this chart shows, on the left-hand side is the amount of authorizations if we approve, and I'll just start with a $10 million level, and then you could flow through with it. If we issue $10 million, the next column shows how much in principal and interest we would pay back through our secondary property tax, based on those issuances. Then we go into calculate what would be the rate required to pay that kind of annual debt service for the $10 million for a single-family home. So that's the rate, .0813, which to a residential property is about $22 a year for a $10 million project. And over a 20-year bond package, that's about $440. Of course, variables are, with assessed values changing, does affect the overall impact to customers.
Mr. Tatter, sorry, we have a question from Vice Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. However, at holding the tax rate at the current rate, wouldn't this be the, this would be the impact anyway, correct? Or this would actually go down if we didn't issue any additional debt?
Yes.
Right?
Well, you were going to my next point on this, so thank you for that lead-in. This is just a picture of what the impact of that one issuance is. We understand that we maintain a rate, we're not going to increase a rate, so we're looking for voter impact to be very limited by approving these bond measures. If the city does not get approved for all the bond measures, if something doesn't pass, we may still issue up to that .8 and just pay principal off sooner or so forth, and we would maintain that impact to taxpayers, the .8 rate in this example. So rates may not go down if we don't approve $10 million. It depends on how we want to pay off those faster as an organization. But we have to, when we bring a publicity pamphlet forward to citizens to consider, it is considered a rate increase, because without these approvals, eventually these taxes will go down, and they won't be responsible for these types of debt service payments. So it's technically an increase per state statutes and so forth. I may have been a little bit longer-winded, but to help, hopefully that answered your question. All right. And with that, that is the question.
Councilmember Shumani has a question as well here.
Sorry, Rick, thank you, Mayor. Really quick question, I don't know why this, we go back one slide, it's really confusing me, because it seems like as the amount authorized goes up, the cost per year goes up as well in this scenario. And I guess I was under the impression that because the rate remains the same, the cost per year doesn't change, but it sounds like maybe that understanding was wrong?
When you look at the whole on the rate, we expect that the impact to be flat over time. But when you look at individual measures, this is the impact of each individual measure that it would have on a taxpayer, not an impact to the overall rate, per se, right? Does that make a sense? We're not looking to increase the rate, we hope to maintain that long-term.
So...
This is a snapshot of what the impact is for these levels of bond issuances of the total rate.
Yes. So if we issued the $70 million, for example?
Yep.
So you're saying there it will be an increased cost for residents at an assessed value of $287 per year?
It will be a rate increase per voter approval pamphlets, but we will not be increasing the .8000 rate for taxpayers. It's a technicality that when we put these into publicity pamphlets, these are considered rate increases, okay? But technically, the city from policy will not increase our rate when issuing these levels.
Right. So I guess my confusion is, you know, whether we authorize as a voting population $10 million or $100 million, I figured because of the capacity and the rate remaining the same, the cost per year wouldn't change, assuming we kept the rate.
The cost overall for the total assessment would maintain at the 8 rate.
Could I jump in here, too? So it's not, it's not an additional impact, you're saying this is what the financial impact is?
For that piece, yes.
But essentially, this is what the impact is currently with previous bond debt?
It's in the ballpark of the current impacts, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's as you take these and layer them into the rate, this is just one layer of the total rate, is what this demonstrates. It's just one layer of that 8.
So it's basically like if you say, okay, we put, my home puts $1,000 a year, and I'm just making this up, secondary property tax rate, okay, that $1,000 for this $10 million bond, that's $22 worth of that total sum.
Within what we expect.
So though the rate is just, we're talking kind of like as an individual and as an individual property, what this breakdown is, is like each individual bond itself, how much a part of that is going towards, for example, $10 million for a housing bond? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Cool. Steam along ahead.
All right.
Yeah, it's Smokey. Should get some can ninety fives, they help.
Thanks, Rick, for your presentation on general obligation bonds. So this next slide is going over potential bond projects. The majority of city council did support the first three that you see on the screen, housing, climate action, and the alternate response care center during the April budget retreat. Recently, we had an infrastructure discussion at the end of September where you heard about some additional infrastructure needs. So we'll be going over those again this evening. As far as the process itself, as you know, we have selected our citizen bond committee members. We've also sent out a doodle poll to begin identifying a date for their first kickoff meeting here within the next few weeks. During this first committee meeting, the members will work to set a schedule, select a chair and a vice chair and work on a team charter as well as process to move them forward, considering all the bond projects and also collecting resident feedback. The insights gathered will be through community service surveys, excuse me, specific to bond projects as well as feedback that they receive in community meetings that they may attend or public participation they have in the committee committee meetings they'll be holding. They'll build a recommendation of potential bond ballot measures and bring that back to city council. For those items that the city council chooses to move forward towards the November twenty 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 two election, this committee can assist with education and outreach as well. So when we're looking at the bond timeline, it began in October when all of you provided us with your recommendations for who the citizen bond committee members should be. This month, we're clarifying what bond projects city council is interested in. That's the intent of our meeting this evening. And as well as scheduling that kickoff meeting with the committee members. City staff and commissioners are also working on their project forms. So this will be the document that helps inform the committee members on what each project entails, what the benefits will be for the community. Between December and May, the committee will learn about the bond projects as well as collect feedback in order to bring a recommendation back to city council between May and June for further consideration. Any bond project selected will be considered a potential bond ballot measure and will be added to a pamphlet in August. And then again, the education and outreach will begin between that August timeframe and the November election. So we're going to start by talking about.
Yeah, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Could you please refresh our memory? What is our deadline in terms of recommending for council to recommend the proposed ballot measures on the ballot? I do recall it was like July?
It's June.
June.
Yeah, middle of June is when you would call the election. And then again, the pamphlets would be due middle of August. I'm looking at the clerk because I I I pull that timeframe from her expertise, of course.
Yes, that is correct. For June, yes. We do have a little bit of flexibility in that date, but that's what we shoot for in terms of getting it in front of you before you go on summer break.
All right. Thank you. We can proceed.
So there's a few more bond projects city council may want to consider as a potential ballot bond measure. So Capital Improvements and Engineering is going to join us next to speak about infrastructure needs that are part of the Rio de Flag and Laundry Overpass projects that are upcoming.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Cameron. I'm a project manager with Capital Improvements. I'll apologize ahead of time. The feed has been really sporadic over the last couple of minutes, so I hope we don't lose each other. So this first item included in the infrastructure bond proposals is neighborhood multimodal connectivity and civic space, which brings together a few community and neighborhood improvements that are either not funded or underfunded at this time. Two of these projects are part of our overall downtown mile project assembly and we've added, we have the added challenge of BNSF railway coordination, which is another reason why we're always investigating funding options to supplement available city funding or a future grant match. So the first of of these projects is the Florence to Walnut pedestrian underpass. This is a planned and partially funded project that will provide a bike pit underpass under the railroad in the La Plaza Vieja neighborhood. The underpass is included in their community specific plan. But we do have two point three million in funding. But with property needs, the updated design that's required and construction and rail mitigation, project costs will will exceed that amount. The benefit of this project hits on a lot of different areas, including safety, equity, climate action, transportation, economic development. And again, our our current funding is two point three million dollars. Slide, please. The second project in the package is the Rio de Flag pedestrian underpass. This underpass will connect north downtown and south side, right, south of city hall. This is going to be a prime opportunity in encouraging transit use because it connects directly to the Mountain Line DCC site. The flood control project for the Rio is funded by the Army Corps and by city stormwater fees. The underpass is what the Corps considers a betterment. It does not directly benefit the flood control aspect of the federal project and it will need to be fully funded by the city. It also hits on similar benefit areas of safety, equity, climate action, transportation. And there's there's currently no funding for this effort. Slide, please. And the third project in the package is delivering the South Side Civic Space, which will provide civic and recreation space for the South Side community. This is a goal that's outlined in the adopted South Side Community Specific Plan. It is currently unfunded and will require funding for property, design and construction. Again, we're seeing a lot of areas, seeing a lot of the same areas of benefit that this project would serve that align, you know, with our community goals. And again, current funding is zero on this. Slide, please. We do have a grant award pending to provide planning and coordination of our local projects adjacent to the BNSF corridor. You know, and hopefully we will hear good news on that this month. A successful bond would provide a complimentary funding source to move these projects and the whole downtown mile local projects forward, which includes the Rio de Flag. We will be seeking a future construction grant for the downtown mile and this bond funding could offset those costs, provide some match funding or demonstrate, you know, in the future grant application. This to our efforts with BNSF, the more assurance we can give the railroad on our community's ability to deliver to deliver these projects, the better it bodes for approval of the Rio de Flag and of the Laundry Overpass agreements. We do not have cost estimates for the work yet. June will be here quickly. So if council is interested, you know, we'll see, you know, what what we can do to to progress, you know, that information to bring it back to you in June. So thank you, Mayor and Council, and I will hand the presentation over either to Ms. Anderson or to Water Services, please.
Thanks, Christine, for your presentation.
Yes, good evening. This is Andy Birdleson. Jim Hukel, our wastewater manager is not with us this evening, so I am covering. For water wastewater infrastructure, we had the council retreat at the end of September. You probably will remember that conversation. So with that conversation, we nailed it down by priority. We currently are at capacity with both solids and liquids at about ninety percent capacity. So we need to rehabilitate and replace our system to have redundancy in the system. And in this system, it's about reliability and redundancy. Also, the integration of a carbon neutrality plan provisions being considered. Our highest priority needs, build two new and refurbish two existing digesters and then keeping all processes operational. The total for that is approximately thirty million. Next slide, please. So here is a breakdown of all of those projects. If you total them all up, it will total about twenty seven point nine million. We rounded up to thirty million. In today's marketplace, we're learning with construction cost, there is there is an escalation factor. Construction costs are up considerably compared to what they have been in the past couple of years. So this is just a highlight of of the projects that we're talking about at that thirty million dollars. If there are no questions on this, I won't get into any detail as as this conversation is more about more about the financial piece and we kind of covered a lot of those details during the retreat. Next slide, please. Stormwater infrastructure, I'm going to turn to Ed Shank. I'm hoping his feed is on. We've all been struggling with our feed a little bit this evening, so I'll turn to Ed. If he can't join, I'll keep talking. Ed?
All right. Thank you, Andy, and good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Hopefully you can hear me today. I'm the stormwater manager here at the city and I'll go over the stormwater infrastructure needs for this bond election. So what we're talking about today is museum fire related improvements in the Spruce Channel watershed. That's the main watershed for the museum fire area. These improvements will be for the existing stormwater infrastructure footprint that extends from near Paradise Road down to Route sixty six. These are enhancements to exist our existing infrastructure. This is will not be for areas that would be needed for a full flood mitigation. We're hoping to increase flow capacity through the city, obviously with the impacts of that post-fire flooding that we've seen this year on the monsoon or during the monsoon. These are relatively minor adjustments compared to the larger need. But this is what we can put together, at least at a concept level in the short term. There are some upstream channel detention and retention projects that either the city or the county will be working on and that will hopefully help with these improvements. The estimated cost for improving our stormwater footprint within Spruce Channel in this area right now is between twelve and eighteen million. I apologize for that large spread. As Andy was speaking to, we are seeing some unprecedented increases in the cost of construction and materials. And it's something that we're continuing to struggle with. Next slide, please. So this is a breakdown of the individual projects within that stormwater infrastructure request. We have Spruce Channel master plan development. That's to be determined. Probably be working with the county on that. There's already preliminary work with a couple of consultants and with the county flood control district, so that is to be determined. The Paradise Channel improvement, that's already been completed. The city portion of that was roughly one hundred forty thousand dollars. That's currently being spent out of stormwater reserves. Hopefully, we can get that reserve back since we'll be needing it for other flood mitigation issues. The Parkway, this is between just upstream of Linda Vista Detention or Retention Basin. This would be on a three point six acre city parcel. The conceptual, sorry, the the engineering cost for that right now is just shy of three million. And that's without a rock clause. So I think we can fully expect that to cost roughly that amount. To upsize these, our existing conveyance, we'll need to upsize. There are two road crossings before we get to Killip School. And that or sorry, three actually, but two that already are existing, Linda Vista and Cedar. We're expecting those to cost roughly about a million dollars each, mostly in utility relocates. Dorothy Inlet Improvement, we already have the design for that and that is with at capital. Roughly eight hundred thousand for that. To divert the flow, the overflow at Royo Seco towards Killip School through Ponderosa Park, we're expecting roughly in the one million range. The Killip School Detention Basin, that's still under discussion with FUSD. But we have what we have here, at least on the slide, is four point six million. We're hoping still to value engineer that a little lower. A lot of conversation going on in the background. And then there's going to be various channel improvements needed in the open channel from Paradise all the way down towards Killip School and we expect that to cost in the range of about six hundred thousand. We already have roughly a hundred eighty nine thousand of that already allocated towards one small section of the stream improvement. Okay, so just running through that really quickly. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Ed, for going over.
Hand it back over.
Yeah, thanks, Ed, for going over our stormwater needs. We're going to kick it on over to Deputy Chief Wilson and he's going to go over our public safety, safety infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mark Wilson with Flagstaff Fire Department. As you remember, in our September meeting, we were talking about infrastructure needs. We had a large, robust, unfunded capital. We've whittled it down to really two critical components. One's a joint that is revolving around the emergency radio equipment between the Flagstaff Fire Department and the Police Department, but it encompasses other divisions within the city as well. So right now, what we're looking at is about a two point seven five million dollar amount associated with replacing hardware. Hardware for repeaters that are up on Mount Eldon in various areas that allow for those radio frequencies to get bounced back between the nine one one dispatch center and those units that are out to be able to communicate to each other, to dispatch and to the various state and federal operators around the community. So that hardware gets old. The software, we have a contract with Motorola to upgrade that software. That is in place, but unfortunately, the hardware is aged out. And so to be able to utilize that new upgraded software, we need to replace the hardware as a result. And that goes into two different areas. One is the repeater towers themselves and the second is the actual radios, mobile radios, handheld radios that are in the different equipment and apparatus throughout the city, which not only represents the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, Streets, Fleets, City Hall, to just name several that are under this overall radio system. So the radios currently are about ten years old. What that means is they're antiquated, their technology is antiquated, and as a result, replacement is near impossible. They can't repair them. They won't service them, but they're still functional. It's really important that I stop and pause and stress. Right now, all of our radio systems are operational, functional, and we're in a safe mode. But as we look into the reality of the replacement needs, this is one that's very high on all of our radars as a result of the infrastructure being aged. The other thing to just mention on this is recently, we talked, we got about a six hundred and some odd thousand dollar grant for our new SCBA equipment. That's all Bluetooth technology. So for us to be able to utilize that and connect to that, this, these radios are too antiquated. So in the two point seven five, the handhelds for the Fire Department are included in that so that they can communicate with the new technology as well. So that's the radio. That's the joint radio side. The next side that we're going to talk about is specific to the Flagstaff Fire Department itself. Currently, we have an eight year fleet replacement process that we work with the city and all the other divisions within under fleet. We replace them as we can based off of a set amount that's provided by the city every year from a budget. What we've identified is there are six pieces of apparatus, which represents about ten percent of our overall apparatus, that are not funded. And in that, one is a quint, and so that's the aerial apparatus that we talked about in September to reach the higher elevation platforms for rescue and firefighting efforts. The other one is a type one engine, which is our all risk engine that you see driving to the majority of all of our calls. The other four are wildland based. So two are wildland engines that respond here to protect us in the urban interface and wildland threats. And the other two of those six are water tenders. And so shuttle water for predominantly wildland events. So those are the six and that's at four point one five. So we've identified just under seven million dollars, right close to seven million dollars. Like Andy said, I will say there's an inflationary reality that's hitting all of us when we're talking about apparatus and equipment. This is that projected today's money. So if you don't have any further questions, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation. Quick, quick question for you in regards to our vehicles that we're looking at to acquire. Do you know if we're looking at the shorter wheelbase options?
So the engine that we have right now, and I believe we spoke on that, what we have identified is the to carry the type of apparatus and the amount of equipment that we carry, the minimum. We have the shortest wheelbase apparatus that will meet that and carry that sufficiently right now that's in production. So we've worked to identify, made sure that the unit that we have spec is that shortest wheelbase out there that would carry the equipment that we need for an all risk or response model.
Great, thank you.
You bet. You bet.
Thank you. May I proceed?
Thank you.
So, city staff have some specific questions for you that will help us continue moving this process forward, but we are also here available to answer any questions that you might have that obviously aren't on this list as well.
Before we get to that, I would like to take the public participant.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Deb Harris, if you'd like to come?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. If you noticed, I was back there punching on my phone because lots of people are texting me about this issue. Because it's my turn to be here tonight. So, first of all, couple of things. I want to know, or I would want you all to think about, did you get adequate representation on that committee, on the Citizens Committee that's gonna look at this? You don't have to answer me now, but that's just one of my questions, and that's what a lot of people are wondering. Are neighborhoods adequately represented on that committee? So you might need to think about that. Also, when you talk about the different bonds or the different projects that we're gonna do, or that we would like to do, keep in mind that when you talk about Southside Civic Space, it does not mean that it's only for Southside. It means that it's a civic space that is located in the Southside area. So we have to be careful how we say things, because people will say, "I'm not voting for Southside." Okay, so be careful with that. That's just a recommendation. The other thing that I would also like to remind staff and council is that it is critical and it is important that everyone feels represented in this process, because all of us who owns property in Flagstaff are going to pay these taxes if, you know, if we do this. And so you need to make sure that all of us are properly represented in that. I think that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
All right. Well, I, I do have a few questions for probably Rick Tatter here in a minute, but let council, if you'd like to, if you need any clarifications on any of the prior information before we jump in to these, because this'll, you know, go a lot of directions. So, Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you. Deputy C. Andrew Anderson, in the neighborhood, multimodal connectivity and civic space, there weren't any projected amounts that I saw?
That, that's correct. I think Christine had indicated during her presentation that they are working towards getting drafts of what those numbers could look like.
Okay.
If Christine's still online and wants to add to that, that might be her hand, I'm not sure.
It is. Thank you. Mayor, council, we, again, we don't have costs, and, you know, we would anticipate that there would need to be, you know, a public process with the Southside Civic Space, with the community overall. But I, I would put, I would put it in between perhaps 10 to 20 million dollars for all three, if we were to go out for a bond.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. As to this list, my preference would be that we let the committee come back to us with, I'd like to see a ranked list, maybe the, the, the bond issues that they feel are the most critical for the community. And, and as to the, do we want to do the entire 100 million? I think I'd like to see what list they come to us with. And then, staff, so when staff is presenting to this committee, I think it would be useful to help the committee understand, like, like in the first slide where the, the money that's already on hand was identified, so any money that's already identified for these projects, and also any possible leveraging opportunities. So, if the community passed a bond for X number of dollars for whatever project, we could secure additional dollars to help that project. And Rick, in the Housing Commission, you gave this great presentation about the city's debt, and you, you started it with the pension liability and, and where we are with that now. I think that that, in addition to what you presented to us today, would be really helpful to help the, the committee understand where the city is debt-wise in, in terms of our overall fiscal health. And, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ashland?
Yeah, just really quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank our city manager for putting this bond oversight committee together. This isn't something that was required or necessary. It was a thoughtful process that I'm, I'm sure many folks were involved with, and I don't know if you want to give a shout out to anyone who came to with this idea, or if it was yours. But I think this is gonna be really helpful to be able to run this stuff through this group of people, and, and thank you for approaching us for recommendations. And I, I just wanted to mention that if there are already grumblings, maybe that's not the best turn of phrase, but if, if, if we're already fielding concerns about the level of diversity on this oversight committee, we should address that right away. And I'm, I'm sure you're already thinking along those lines, just wanted to say it out loud. And I just appreciate, I mean, we, we're not entitled to this process, so another great thing coming from the city manager's office, I just wanted to give credit to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashland. So, as, let me, I do have a few questions, but let me lead off here, and that, right now, we're looking for the parameters of the discussion and what we, as a council body, would potentially like to see on the ballot. We have very short amount of time to make that decision, punting it completely to a Citizens Committee to set up that parameters and to do some sort of ranking, that's, I, I want their input, I'd like to see what they would like to prioritize. But we really need to kind of provide those parameters for those, their sake, there're gonna be, many probably may not have been to many of these meetings. Obviously, some of us have some confusions about even what we were presented. So there's a large learning curve, and then on top of it, once the council, once the committee gets this together, that the amount of staff time that's gonna be required to prepare this for a June vote is quite substantial. So I think with that, we need to really be mindful, council, on what we are going to kick to this commission, committee, and not say, "Let's do all of it and see what everyone thinks about everything." We don't have time for that. So, with that, I would like to see where we might want to, I mean, I'll be frank, too, all of what we've represented here today is extremely important and very meaningful to our family, or for our family, our, our city and our families, and that city. But, what is it that we want on next year's ballot? What would we want to say, "Hey, this is a priority, but we might need to see this in three years' time"? And also, really do be mindful, I mean, I pulled up some papers last, scholarly articles last night, which I'm happy to send to folks, about how, how voter fatigue is real. And that, I'll give you one study that was found just in 2016 in The Economic Review that showed that, that choice fatigue in one ballot of, or not one ballot, they did a natural experiment, found that absentions would, would increased by 8%, and 6% of the propositions in their data set would have passed rather than failed, and that's from Oxford Academic. So not to get too dorky with the data, and you get, you all can do your independent research as well, but let's be mindful, we don't want to put seven things on that ballot, or at least, I don't. So anyways, I'm just giving my general thoughts. I do have some questions for Mr. Tatter. Getting your exercise. Come up and down. So, you were mentioning that we have unspent bond dollars for parks and rec land acquisition, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that something we can use for the civic space in Southside?
No, the language was, was pretty specific about land acquisition, and Rebecca's here, she'll correct me, along the lone, the Lake Mary Road corridor. I believe it was also Cheshire, not Cheshire, sorry. Rebecca may be a jump in here. What's that? Continental and over by Christiansen, I think were the three areas. It was very specific of areas. So, no is the answer.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Another question would be, kind of how to combine certain things that we're saying here. One thought would be, with the underpass, pedestrian underpass next to the downtown connection center, since that is very much related to our stormwater interests, if we did a stormwater bond, could we include that, that particular bike pad underneath the railroad tracks with a larger stormwater infrastructure that could include that Spruce Avenue?
So let me make sure we're talking the same thing. If we brought forward these two ideas for voter approval for geo-bonds, is what you're talking about, could we combine them as one and bring it forward as one?
Yes, that if we're calling for stormwater infrastructure, that it could include that bike pad underneath the, the railroad tracks that is related to our stormwater infrastructure projects.
Yeah, I believe absolutely, if there's, there's like causes and stuff, we can definitely combine them. I would leave that expertise to our company that's helping us develop the conversations around the ballot measures, and Shannon could share more about that. You could group multiple packages as one, one message to go to the voters, or slice and dice and, and make it very thin. I, I think there's options there.
Okay. And then, another question I have is, with the, the fire infrastructural needs, with these repeat towers, we're servicing far more than just the city of Flagstaff, are, are we not? I mean, we have with the surrounding areas. I, I'm just wondering what options we might have for, I mean, getting other fire districts, other people that use these repeat towers to help us more at the local level as opposed to, you know, saying, "Oh, we'll get federal grants for it," but, look some more here on the ground.
Fair question. To answer the question specifically, though, no, this is related to the Flagstaff Dispatch Center. Out of that dispatch center, we do have contracts with other entities, but they pay for those services already through different contract measures. So what the system is in place for right now, that we're looking to replace, is specifically for the city of Flagstaff and as it relates to the 911 Dispatch Center.
Okay. And is there a way that we could increase, in the, for future contracts with other fire districts or whatnot, to increase fees to help us pay for some of this on more ongoing? I'm just wondering if we're moving forward with it, if we had that kind of-
I'll let the dispatch chief talk about that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So currently, the public safety radio system we use, we share with NAU, and we share some of our software with Arizona State University as well. And they have helped pay for that software portion. However, the towers on the mountain, that is only used to dispatch city people and NAU people. So NAU would pay their fair share of replacing this repeater that was identified. But all the radios, handheld radios and vehicle radios that we're talking about here, those are in city vehicles. So there's no way to share that cost with others.
Yeah, got, yeah, I got that part. I didn't know how many people were using our repeat.
The dispatch center, what we do is we look at the total number of calls coming in and the cost to run that dispatch center, and then we bill that out as a percentage. So, if your fire district takes 5% of the calls that we bring in, we bill you for 5% of the cost to run that center.
Ah, okay.
And so that's proportionally how it's worked out. So I don't think there's an opportunity there to raise fees to outside users.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that. Well, I will, let me, now that I have some other comments to make, but since most of my questions were now answered, I wanted to turn over the mic and not take over the airwaves too much, if anyone has some commentary. Councilmember Ashland?
Rick, I, I wanted to ask you real quickly if the, the, the slides you showed us of the general obligation bonds passed is all-inclusive?
I missed the one piece. Say that again.
The, the, the two slides in which you show us the past obligation bonds. Geos throughout the years, down through 1996, is this an all-inclusive list, or is it selective?
Yeah, these are all geo-bonds going back to 1996. I did not do further research than that.
Well, I, I just want to make a couple of observations, and this isn't to contravene what we're hearing from the mayor, who's, who's research on the academics of this is, is in line with my own understanding of what voter fatigue is. I, I think, I, I think we can avoid voter fatigue by framing all of this correctly. And the, the categorizing and cataloging of, of these monies into, into frameworks and certain packages will be very helpful. One, one thing I've noticed on here is that every single time public's safety has come up for a vote, it has passed. So, that's encouraging to me, that if we were to package a public safety bond measure all by itself, with, without respect to whatever else we're doing, in my mind, it has a large likelihood of passing, just because I think voters understand public safety and those needs are ongoing, and those sorts of updates to our public safety apparatus and infrastructure are always going to come across voters' desks, and they're going to support it. So I think there's, there's, some of this will eat into a voter appetite and some of it won't. I'm also curious about, and, and I want to frame this carefully, because I, I don't want to suggest in any way whatsoever that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, or that this is a zero-sum game. But when we talk about climate action and we talk about flood control, the voter might be able to conceive of those two things in the same breadth. And I wouldn't want the, the new monies that we're talking about in terms of flood mitigation to eat into what we're talking about already in terms of climate action. But it might be interesting to combine those two items as a climate mitigation and adaptation measure, with, with, with both of those pots of money is cumulative, right? We're not, we're not talking about one pot of money that's shared between two ideas suddenly. So, these are some of the ways I'm thinking. I, I like, you know, I really want to see that underpass go in where the, the downtown connection center's gonna be. I think it's important that we, we get that one in there. I don't know if that's, if, if that, if the best place to put that is, is our flood mitigation stuff or not. It's, that's an interesting idea. But if we're, if we're gonna start combining things, I would rather package things that are most similarly related to how we're reacting to our changing climate. So those are just some initial thoughts. I, I'm noticing that one of the things that seems to fail the most is land acquisition efforts or recreational items. Sometimes they do pass, not always. I think that's when the voter fatigue starts to set in, because these things can unfortunately always seem less of a priority than the immediate infrastructure improvements that are required. So just thinking out loud here, and I can turn off my mic and let someone else talk, but those are some initial thoughts for me. One thing that I really want to see happen is that we need the voters to vote with their ballot box to support our climate act- ballot box to support our climate action efforts. We can't just talk about these things up here and going carbon neutral by 2030 and not have the voters support this. So that's kind of a scary thing to say because ultimately, a climate action bond could fail. But the voters need to put their, their money where their mouth is, so to speak. So that one needs to happen. And I think if we do a public safety bond measure, that's not going to eat into our voter fatigue. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Schumacher.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, looking at this historical list that is in that chart you sent us, I think I counted, I think it's, let's see, I think there's like 12 in 2004, some crazy number of ballot initiatives. Is it nine, is it eight? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, of which the majority of those passed. Yeah. So, you know, this is just an interesting point, Mayor. I was checking each year how many different initiatives were on the ballot and what was passing versus what wasn't. And then 2004 just blows it out of the water.
Well, just, just remember that that's when we had local elections as a separate ballot measure. Now we have the governor, we have the state legislators, the state bonds. That previously was when it was only local candidates. So just...
And that was 20 years ago.
Yep.
Sure.
With probably about a 35% voter turnout.
But that gives me hope that, you know, we don't need to narrow this down to two items potentially because there is a lot on this list. And this conversation is hard to have without speaking about the housing bond and the climate bond and the alternate response effort. You know, we're speaking about what we talked about, I think, most recently at the infrastructure retreat, at least in this presentation. And that's helpful, but without having the full conversation, I am struggling as a councilperson in really weighing out the totality of this bond conversation. So I do support, you know, I think running this through the committee. I do wonder if we can maybe reach out to a few more individuals in neighborhoods such as La Plaza Vieja, Sunnyside, and see if we can get some more diverse representation, assuming there isn't members from those neighborhoods already. And C-Major, I'd love to let you jump in on that if you have something to add.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I think we have good diversity now, but we're going to double check to make sure we have it not just by topic or subject matter, which, you know, council has advanced some recommendations to us. I think all of those recommendations have ended up on the list. We've added to it. But we need to double check that with respect to neighborhoods and kind of the geographical diversity in addition to other diversities, which I believe are present on it. For example, I know we have strong advocacy for both housing and sustainability on that list. So allow us to do that. Right now, that list is hovering now between probably close to 18 or 19 individuals. We will need to be mindful of the numbers as we go forward. But we're up to the task. I think it's very important, and we do have representation from Southside, but I think we need to make sure we have good representation from the Plaza Vieja and Sunnyside as well. And again, I think we have very good representation from the two big topics of housing and sustainability.
I appreciate that and I appreciate your additional efforts. And you're welcome to remove my recommendations. It's a clear room, but I know you won't. That was half a joke.
We may be past the point of no return. I would be hesitant to remove members now unless, unless there's direction for me to do so.
I was, I was half joking, but yeah, I hear you with that 18, 19 member group. Yeah, but thank you, that sounds good. And then just lastly, Mountain Line, I just want to let the council and the community know, Mountain Line did bring up funding needs recently and will be considering a recommendation to the city in the coming weeks. So I just wanted to plant that seed as well. And I mean, there's just a lot of needs in the community, as you mentioned there, and they're all, each rightfully important and a priority. So I don't really have much clarity on how to, you know, recommend us moving forward with narrowing this list down. I am intrigued to see how the committee wrestles with it and what they bring back to us. I'm open to hearing what, what you all have to say. But without, like I mentioned in the beginning, without talking about housing, climate and alternate response, I do feel a little, yeah, just lacking in that discussion in regards to this discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rasslin.
Can we package public safety and alternate response together? Has that been discussed?
We can wrestle with that and come back to you. I also think we would like to get some feedback on the many infrastructure issues that have been presented and those can be packaged as well. Stormwater, of course, much of this pertains to stormwater, but there's also components of the infrastructure that concern, you know, bike and pad infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure specific to the underpasses, wastewater. And, you know, you had a good retreat on those needs in addition to public safety.
I just wonder if we do do a public safety infrastructure bond measure, which I'm leaning towards. Again, I don't think that's going to cut into our voter appetite. If we couch alternate response care center underneath that in there, but not necessarily lead with that, we lead with the more tried and true public safety item top line, I would like you to look into that. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to second that as well. That was one thing that seemed like that could be a coupling. I'm definitely in support. I mean, if our radios aren't working, I mean, how much does that, and we already have sunken costs into the Bluetooth technologies that we could utilize. I'd definitely support us moving forward with the needed fire equipment for this. And it does seem if we are going to include an alternate response or a care center or whatever else, that it'd be couched into a public safety style. But Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. First to speak to who's on the committee. Mr. Clifton mentioned that we do have someone from the Southside. I know that Anthony Garcia is on the committee and I don't know where he lives now, but I know he used to live in Sunnyside. So he definitely has a Sunnyside connection, so I think that's good. As far as putting $100 million before the voters, I feel kind of uncomfortable with that. To me, that seems like too much to ask. So it's, and, and, you know, we are going to have this committee, which is going to give us recommendations, so I'm not going to get into great details. But I would say that public safety, you know, fire equipment, radios, to me, that's a no-brainer. That has to be done. The other thing is that the wastewater and stormwater things that Andy talked about tonight, that's a no-brainer. That has to be done, in my opinion. Okay, then you get down to what else can we add to the list? And I would like to see some money for climate action. You know, and this part is a little softer. I think we want to hear what the committee says. But I do find the idea of La Plaza Vieja underpass to be worthwhile. I know that there's a lot of trespassing going over that train track right now. And there's two issues. One is it's a safety issue and secondly, BNSF could, could, you know, shut that route down and make it so that nobody could go across there. I do like the idea of a Southside civic space. That kind of ties into the Lone Tree Overpass and all of those projects. And we may want to put some money in for housing. And I'm sure that there will be a big push for that. So before you know it, you're out of capacity. So, I mean, just the public safety in the water adds up to 55 million. Well, if I don't want to go to 100 million, you're almost there. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I think it's challenging to talk, to talk dollar figures and how projects go together without a comprehensive presentation on all of the projects at one time where we can see everything side by side. And so that's where I'm looking to this committee, to have all of that information right in front of them while they're ranking. And I think that we can, we can start at dollar figures and then bring them down to what we think that the voters will support. And I see that as what we do when the, when their recommendations come back to us is then we talk about, all right, what do we think that the, the public is going to support? And, and that question is not only dollar figures, but it's also the value that they think that they're receiving from these projects. And I know some of these, it seems, you know, more challenging to describe the benefit that they're getting from some of the more infrastructure-type projects, but we know that they're absolutely critical. And housing, I would, I would say, of course, I think you all know where I stand, housing has to be part of this in some fashion. So, you know, I have a list of the types of projects that I would support, but I'd really like to see what the committee comes back to us with. And then we can talk about how things might be packaged together and maybe the committee will have some suggestions as well. In terms of the alternate response, since we've already designated money in ARPA, you know, a big chunk of money, I'm not supportive of seeing a ballot measure for that for any significant amount of money unless, unless I can see how it fits into the overall picture of public safety. And again, public safety, I think, is a no-brainer, needs to go on the ballot. But I just think, I think we don't have a comprehensive idea of exactly what alternate response care center looks like. And so at this point, I wouldn't be supportive of that being on the ballot next year.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I do look forward to the committee coming back to us and thank you for ensuring there's diversity. I am not comfortable going anywhere near the 100 million mark, but I do definitely support the wastewater, stormwater and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I look forward to more focused discussion with the committee's recommendation. And my proposed priorities are public safety, stormwater, wastewater, the neighborhood multimodal connectivity and civic space, and housing.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will state the one, one of the big ones that, I mean, we have an emergency and a crisis that has been declared by the prior council, climate and housing. One thing we definitely know is that there is a lot of skepticism from years past from the bond for housing, which needs to be taken into consideration. The climate action, though, is something we also can receive some cost recovery on. That's something that I'm very interested in as we look through bond measures. Having a solar farm, having a biochar fuel plant. I mean, I know that one's a little farther, farther out, a little, you know, trying to think ahead here, but solar farm's very doable. And if we can find ways that we can create revolving dollars with this or cost recovery through the process, I think that's going to be a wise, wise idea. I'm very supportive of a climate bond, if that is, or a green bond, if that's included with the storm water as more, both mitigation and resiliency, then I am very, I can see those two going together. I'm very concerned with the very large price tag when it comes to our wastewater, because I do believe that was $30 million. So as it stands now, that is the largest chunk of change we have. I would like to learn more of what we can do to leverage funds, how other cities have been able to do it, because us going it alone with $30 million seems like that is, that's going to be a substantial hit to our ability to do a lot of the other things on this list. So if I, I would like to learn more about that. I don't know if there's an easy answer right now, but, City Manager.
Thank you. You queued up my response beautifully. There is no easy answer right now. This is the start of a long dialogue. And going back to the timeline that Shannon showed you early on, we have a lot of time. Now, that's not to, you know, underestimate the, the needed time, nor is it to in any way brush aside the importance of all this right now. There are many in our community right now who would very much like to see what we plan on doing with stormwater infrastructure. I want to impress council with a couple of thoughts here to ease some concerns upfront. One is this is the start of a long discussion and we will have many minds at the table to help us navigate through the complexities of this. And those, those same minds will be diverse, both in terms of geographic representation, but also, you know, in terms of values and priorities. So we will do our best to have a good representation of the community. I would like to emphasize also that the Citizen Bond Committee is going to be advisory and so things are coming back to this council, but they will come back with the benefit of a lot of input. We haven't talked much about our commissions, but we have very well-informed commissions, housing, sustainability, and the list goes on. And they will be weighing in on this as well. This is not just about a citizen committee. That will be one more venue, if you will, or source of information to, you know, derive recommendations that will, will come back to the council, along with the commissions, along with some staff input as well. The other thing, and the comment was made earlier in the presentation by Christine and others, we will do everything we can to leverage dollars here. So all the figures that have been approximated for you tonight and the ones that haven't been approximated would, would be, would presuppose that we're opening up the checkbook and funding all of this. And that won't be the case. We will leverage dollars. We already have the raised grant submitted. Stay tuned on that. We haven't talked about, you know, a potential infrastructure bill, but we know that there's one brewing in Washington and we'll stay tuned on that. You know, that could provide some opportunities. Leveraging dollars, back to your comment, Mayor, for wastewater treatment, absolutely. You know, it's hard for us to cash flow all of these projects and it's harder for us to ask our taxpayers to burden the entire cost of these things. So, but, but we've had successes to show for it. Back to the BNSF mitigation and the Rio de Flag project, you know, we have a $52 million appropriation from the Army Corps of Engineers from two years ago that, that remains on the books. So there are things we can and do and will continue to do. The purpose of tonight's discussion was to start the discussion, the dialogue, and to talk in big picture about, you know, what the priorities might be. And I think we're getting some good input from council in that regard. So we're taking notes, but I just want to give you some assurances. It won't be easy. I'm not trying to gloss it over, but we'll be coming back to you and there's, I think, a lot of possibilities in the dialogue that lies ahead to try to figure some of this stuff out.
Thank you, City Manager. Just with that, I'll just stay where I'm, my, a little more clearly where I'm at with this. Climate action and mitigation for stormwater fees as well as our... Climate action and mitigation for stormwater fees, as well as our public safety, is, are my top priorities, as others have ranked theirs. I feel like I'd like more information, given the large price tag with the wastewater, on what can we do to leverage funds, what's out there? And I see that as something that we could kick a couple of years down the road to ask the public, rather than doing it right now. In terms of housing, I mean, I feel like we, we have, I mean, we have an emergency right now. But at the same time, we need to be very mindful with the price tag and very mindful of the fact that it failed a few years ago. And so when we think the dollar amounts and so forth, that that's going to proceed, I just want us to be mindful of what we can actually get through the public and what they have the appetite for. Aside from that, in terms of the packaging of them, I'm good. I mean, however we can see this, I see public safety being able to put together. I'm not set on having to bond with alternate response at this time, but I want that to continue to be part of the conversation. And if it is packaged, it seems befitting for the fire. Stormwater and climate action seems, they go hand in hand. And that's something that we could package. And I feel like with what we've faced over this summer and can expect potentially happening next year, with sandbags littering the streets every time I drive home from City Hall, we have to do something about that. So anyways, I'll, I'll, I'll get off the soapbox, but I think that makes it pretty clear where, where my, my brain's at in general. And I'm not interested in 100 million, if I didn't say that before. Councilmembers, any other input? Councilmember Shimonie.
Just want to just add to the conversation. When we talk about the 100 million, that's come up a few times. I just want to remind folks, we didn't have anything on the ballot a couple of years ago because of COVID. And those of us who are on council will remember that very clearly. And when you talk about housing bond initiatives that are $30 million and other initiatives that add up, I guess personally, I'm not as close-minded to the $100 million number. I, I want to remain open-minded to that, but I, I agree with a lot of the concerns that were brought up about what's palatable to the public. I think that we speak about millions of dollars quite regularly. And to an average citizen, they're blown away when they hear that type of a price tag. So I do respect that concern. And then just Mayor, really quick, I just want to add too, with the housing bond, I do see there being a lot of differences this time around. And I think we've learned a lot from the, the failure of the first round. But I look forward to that conversation in, in the coming months. I know, you know, you're, you are too. I think that's all I wanted to add. Yeah, I just thank everybody who's been working on these things. These are, these are difficult topics to leverage and, you know, navigate. And I think that we're doing the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Shimonie. All right, other clarifications we need from, from us, from the staff side?
I think that'll get us started, Mayor. And certainly we'll begin working with the committee and then just be coming back to you with updates to make sure that we're avoiding the committee putting together a recommendation that doesn't hit the mark of what council is looking for. That was really the intent of understanding kind of what your big-picture desires were, is so that we're able to say, you know, this is the ballpark of where council would like to be, so that we're, we're working towards creating those types of packages. So I appreciate your input tonight, and we'll just continue to communicate as we move forward.
And everyone cross their fingers for the next week on the infrastructure bill, please. Jeez Louise. All right. Well, with that moving along here, I think we should just power through. We only have the fairs left here, unless otherwise noted. Agenda item 14A is a request by councilmember Shimonie to place on a future agenda discussion regarding the city's engineering standards as it relates to speed limits and design characteristics of roadways.
Mayor and council, I did have just one comment about the fair process and the whole rules of procedure process. And looking through, I just noticed we've kind of gotten away a little bit from the fact that the discussion of the item does not happen here. This is simply where we determine whether there's support to move forward with discussion later on. So while the proposing council member of the fair, the requesting council member can basically make a statement saying, this is what the fair is about, this is what I'm looking for, there's not to be a whole lot of discussion. It's simply, is there support, is there not support? And then we move forward.
I like your thinking. All right. Councilmember Shimonie.
I see what you did there, Sterling.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, it happened to be on yours, councilmember Shimonie. I didn't intend that to be. I, no, I was going to say something, but I won't.
Oh, good, good. Stacy, cut his mic. So this is my fair item, and I'm glad that this is coming up as efficiently as it has to see if there's council support. I'll just say in short that I, I crafted this fair with our city engineer, Rick Barrett, and he helped me figure out how, what I was, I was trying to pinpoint and then how to craft the language for what it was, what that was, the discussion I'm hoping we can have. And, and what I've learned through kind of flailing here from the dice at times, trying to figure out how to address our engineering standards and, and our projects that are being proposed, so that, you know, we're ensuring the best project we're doing. I, I've learned that it comes down to these engineering standards. And so rather than running into walls, I'm trying a different approach, which is going into the root of the discussion, which is regarding those engineering standards and, and how it relates to speed limits, design characteristics of roadways, et cetera. So I'm really hopeful that there's a couple of folks on the status who are open to that conversation. I see some head nods. And I just think that, you know, my, my trip to Oregon was very humbling in what is possible in terms of design standards within our country, not outside of this country, within the country. And I think there's a lot we can learn from, from other committees who are a little, a little bit ahead of us, some say 10-plus years. And I hope we can kind of fill that gap sooner than later and catch up, which I think we're right on track for. And I've been so proud of the work of this council and your all's advocacy on these topics. So I think that this, this fair request in closing kind of goes to the heart of the matter. And these adjustments, I'm hoping we can dive into and potentially adjust, will last, outlast any of us up here today. And so something that we could all really be proud of for years and years to come as being part of Team Flag. So that's my little spiel. Hopefully that's okay, Sterling. And yeah, looking forward to hearing what your thoughts are. Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to give a thumbs up on my behalf. I'm down. And there's your majority.
And, and one of the things I noted as well, going back through some previous meetings, if we could get those who are in favor of it, rather than just a thumbs up or a head nod to actually verbalize it, that would be great.
Lessons learned from Zoom meetings. Vice Mayor.
I'm in support.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I have some concerns about this, but I think it's worth a discussion. I mean, like changing speed limits, dream on. People just drive whatever speed they feel comfortable with, like Enough said. But I am supportive of a discussion.
Councilmember Sweet.
I'm in supportive of the discussion.
All right, there we go. Moving right along is my future agenda item request, request by Mayor Deasy to place on a future agenda discussion regarding a rebate program for alternate energy on homes. So, you know, we've seen this with the electrical vehicles at the dealerships. I've heard nothing but good feedback about this. This seems like low-hanging fruit, to be honest, that is not very costly to the city to provide, you know, I think most electric vehicles, if you buy brand new, you're getting a $600, $700 rebate right now for a size of a car that's about the, or not size, but cost of a car that's about as much as it costs to put solar panels on your home. This will allow, for example, builders of alternate energy to be able to approach homes and be able to say, look, you have $0 down. You're going to be able to save your money on your first, on your first month's bill through this. And here's a kicker, the city's going to send you a $600 to $800 rebate. That is a good way to get people's ears peaked for converting to solar or whatever alternate energy is in their homes. And when you think about it for all of us and the city dollars, it's not that much money, actually. In fact, out of the 25 grand allocated from electric, for the electric vehicle rebate program, I believe we've only used about $6,000. So this would be a way maybe we could even pool it together. I know there might be concerns for where those dollars are coming from. But it seems like we already have set aside money for that similar intended purpose. So I would just like to hope that I can get a discussion on this. We can get more details. But I just seems like, you know, we can talk about a $15 million climate bond, and then we can make some roads, some steps on the road to getting toward our climate action that, you know, we, we need to be hitting this from every angle. So anyways, there's my spiel. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. I see value in this discussion. I think that this is a good area for us to focus. And I'm curious to hear how the staff presentation goes and our discussion up here. I do feel like electric vehicles are wonderful, but they are still vehicles. So converting homes into electric and alternate, you know, energy sources, I think makes a lot more sense to me than, than just focusing on converting vehicles. I see a lot more value in this topic. And I know that our community already is all over this topic. You know, we did the Solar United partnership this past year and had over, I think, 100 residential homes in the region sign up and break records statewide for such an effort by Solar United Neighbors. My only, my only comment, Mayor, I think, as we move forward with this topic, assuming there's support, is that we figure out how to definitely ensure that local solar distribution companies are getting the business. But we can discuss that later. But I, I appreciate this fair, and I, I definitely, it definitely has my support.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have solar on my house, and it was installed by a local company. And I would see value in a rebate program, so I do support the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I support the conversation as well. And I'm wondering if we could include electric bikes in there for a rebate program.
All right, well, we do, we do have sufficient direction on that to be able to proceed for further conversation. All right. Brings us to agenda item 15, our info items to for mayor, council, and staff and future agenda item requests. Started on this side of the room this last time, so councilmember Solis.
I have nothing tonight.
All right, councilmember Sweet.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I'll pass.
All right. Vice Mayor.
We had, or, city manager, I see that we're having a discussion of the flood area on November 23rd. And I'm wondering when council is going to consider having a larger community meeting for the residents in the flood area?
We certainly could orchestrate one if there hasn't been one already. I know there's so many moving parts on this. We have Forest Service and others coming into town on Monday. There's opportunities potentially for some additional or some FEMA reimbursement. We're having discussions like the one tonight about identifying projects and trying to fund those. We're having very fruitful discussions about re-prioritizing some funds, reworking some finances to free up the monies necessary for the immediate projects that will occur between now and the next monsoon season. There's lots of things happening, so it's probably time to schedule that larger meeting.
Thank you. And I'm thinking outside of the council meeting, a meeting in the area where we can pull together all of this information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just want to let folks know that I am looking into further diving into the conversation with NAH leadership in regards to housing at their new location and not adjacent, but on the property that they're, they're built, they're hoping to build upon. So I'm setting up meetings with key individuals to discuss that further. And, and that also is in partnership with Mount Mine to try and ensure that there is bus transportation out at that site as part of the plan. I'm also helping to coordinate meetings with leadership from Portland to help our team discuss and understand what they did with their consultant process in 2018 when it came to their bike pad needs at their city level. And that led to a 18-project outline list of things to do in Portland that they are now doing with a five-year funding plan. So, so we're learning more about that in, in their process to see if that can help us at all here in Flagstaff. And then just lastly, I, I just saw on my calendar that I missed the Mexican consulate on Saturday. And if anyone did attend that, I'd love to hear how that went. But yeah, I'm bummed to hear I missed that. And, oh, it got canceled. Okay, good to know. Thank you for that. And that is it. Good meeting today. Thank you all.
You, Councilmember Rasslin.
Thank you, Mayor. I will mention that I was able to have my first sit-down, one-to-one relational meeting with President Jose Cruz of NEU on Friday. He's very much interested in meeting with everybody. And it was, it was a, a challenge to get on his calendar finally. But I think he's settling in now, and it was, it was wonderful to finally meet with him. We very informally discussed some of our shared visions and goals. I focused on climate. We really hit it off talking about our shared experiences living in Tegucigalpa in Honduras. I was there, of course, as a Peace Corps volunteer. He was there as a child for a while. And so just a really nice touchstone there. Looking forward to lots of conversations as a council body with him and just welcoming a new neighbor into town. I did, so this is a very low-grade fair item request, city manager. I'm, I'm sad to hear that we, we've had a, a changing of the guard in our HR department. But I, I'd like to move forward with, with this at your convenience as, as we can. I've, I've long felt that, you know, we have a wonderful process for providing evaluation and feedback to our city manager and our city attorney. It's, it's a fairly formal process. And I know that they, our, our, our management finds, finds that very valuable. I, I'm kind of jealous. I, I would like to be the recipient of some formal institutional feedback. And I can, I can understand how this might be fraught, but I'm sure there's a path forward. And I would, I would definitely want it to be voluntary. I, I don't think this is for everybody who serves as a public official. But I'm always eager and willing to learn and to receive feedback. And sometimes it's hard to get that feedback in an authentic, honest way when you're in the kind of position that we are up here as city council members. But for my own professional development and my own standing here at the city amongst my peers and amongst management and other staff, I'd like to know, I'd like to get a grade. I'd like to know how I'm doing. And so maybe once we have some new leadership at HR, that's something we could task them with thinking through a little bit. I would appreciate that. And again, it's kind of a personal request, but maybe others would, would be open to that sort of feedback as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Rasslin. I'll just note, put a little future agenda item request that is going to make me a lot of friends with engineering, let me tell you. I want to see about the rainbow crosswalk and start discussing that. So future agenda item request for a potential rainbow-colored crosswalk. Doesn't necessarily have to be right outside the door, but I would not mind. You know, otherwise we might have hooligans chalking it up with the, with chalk and coloring it every June 1st, so don't want that to happen. Anyways.
Mayor, for clarification, pedestrian crosswalk rainbow design?
Yes. May not be, well, what is, what's the new one that is more inclusive? We, yeah, more, it includes brown and black and other colors as well. So I forget what. We, yeah, more, it includes brown and black and other colors as well, so I forget what, what do they call it these days? Anyways, oh, I can write you the, the fair item, but just wanted to throw that out there for discussion. Not a huge priority, but something worth considering. Okay, sounds good. I think, unless you got anything from us, city manager?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Adjourned.